All right, it's 2:11 on Tuesday, May 23rd. This is our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Apologies for our slight delay. We have been at it since 9:00 a.m. this morning with the work session. And so now I'm going to move forward with the roll call. Trustee Jeff Church.
Sure.
Trustee Adam Mayberry.
Here.
Vice President Diane Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Clerk Joe Rodriguez, I know is in the building. We will greet him when he comes in. President Beth Smith, that's me, present. Trustee Colleen Westlake.
Here.
Trustee Alex Woodley.
Here.
And Student Representative Ivy Batmull.
Here.
Wonderful, all right, thanks everybody. So now for today's pledge, there is a member of the public who sends us emails and his thoughts, and provides a lot of great support and thoughtfulness, and I certainly always appreciate his presence. So Mr. Mike Krogan, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
As to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a scroll.
Thank you all. All right, that closes out our opening items, and so now we will move on to our consent agenda items. I believe that we have two items. Trustee Church, are you still pulling items 2.13 and 2.14?
I believe all of the appointments. Let me look here, you caught me with a mouthful of animal crackers. You can blame Trustee Westlake. So we're looking at all the appointments, which would be 2.13, 2.14, 2.15, and I don't need to pull 2.16, so 1.3, 1.4, 1.5.
All right, very good. I'll be opening those all together in a group for those items, since they all involve reappointments. So that leads us, or leaves us, I should say, with items 2.02 to 2.12 and item 2.16. Is there any discussion on any of those items among the board before we go to public comment? All right, seeing none. JJ, do we have public comment on those numbers that I just mentioned?
I have none.
Okay, very good. All right, seeing no discussion, I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items 2.02 to 2.12 and item 2.16.
Move to proof.
All right. Motion made by Trustee Woodley, seconded by Clerk Rodriguez. Oh, okay, I saw his line on. Okay, I apologize. No, 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 I'm not going to take this moment of glory from you, Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Mayberry has made this motion, and I would like to honor that. And I believe the second was with Clerk Rodriguez, right? All right, is there any discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Trustee Church, did you vote? I need to get you on the record. Are you a yae?
I was a yae.
Okay, so that's, so motion carries seven to zero. All right, we'll go ahead and we will open items 2.13, 2.14, and 2.15 together as a group. Now, mind you, when we do that team, it still means that we would make individual motions for those numbers, but it allows us to discuss these topics together as a group, since having seen previous emails, I understand that the concerns are widely shared among the three items. So do we have staff here for that? Or Trustee Church, can you walk us through your concerns?
I can walk through, and then we can see if we need staff or anything. So essentially, what we have is a number of committees of the board, and staff is recommending 14 reappointments to those committees. Going back many months, I've requested that we not do that. I believe that it's fair to open it up to the community to apply. Some of these people have been on these boards since 2015. That's nine years, or eight years. It's a long time to be on the board without opening it to the public to apply, most of some of these people, we don't know. None of us were on the board back then, and so I think it's just fair in general. Now, when we go into the specifics of the individuals, some of the individuals have rather dismal attendance records. And we voted at the last meeting to set out, it's, we're under the current policy, we haven't changed it, but the intent of the board, I think, was clear that we changed how long one could serve to, I think, three terms, and we changed what we consider good attendance to be thirty, not missing more than 33% of the meetings. So that's the intent of this board that we expressed last meeting when we sent it out to public, but that new policy has not yet been instituted, so I will be clear on that. But we have individuals that have missed almost 50%. So Ms. Leann McCully, which would be the, let me digress. We have three different important boards. You have the Student Attendance Board. Chronic absenteeism is a major problem. We have some schools approaching over 40, 50% in the 12th grade of chronic absenteeism. We have the Safe Schools, and violence is definitely an issue at the forefront. It was discussed earlier today at 9:00 a.m. It's extremely important. So we need people that are going to show up at these meetings. If they're going to volunteer, they better be showing up at the meetings. And then we have the Share, which is essentially sex ed, which is again, very much in the public light, and we need these people to represent the community and to show up at meetings. So we have one individual who missed 33%, another individual, eight of 15 meetings. That's one short of 50, missing 50% of the meetings. Another one missed 40%, another one about 33%. Again, people appointed since 2013. So I guess we can go by one by one, but I think that the best option is just to tell these people, look, we value your input, we value your applying, but we want you to compete fairly with those other people in the community that since 2015 have not had that opportunity. That said, that kind of sums up the general, I can go through individually, et cetera. A side issue that's created is, as I look through these boards, it says, for example, under Nevada law statute 392 on student attendance, it says, we may, we may have the following members. Okay, we may. But then suddenly, somebody decided there's going to be seven members. Well, who decided that and when? I don't have no knowledge, it's not in any policy I can find. So that opens a whole nother discussion, but that's the general idea, is that I think we need to be fair to the public, and I think, as in our policy, if they're not attending adequately, we have a right to say no, and we should say no.
All right, thanks, Trustee Church. Couple points of clarification is that the potential policy change was not in place when they signified their interest to move forward. So there's no way to hold somebody to a standard that was previously perfectly acceptable, but this board may very well change, and we're having that discussion. Also, we did just have the conversation around board appointments, and this board moved forward with reappointments being fine, so I can't strike someone just because they're being reappointed when we've just confirmed that that's still okay with us, but appreciate all of that. I don't see any other lights on, so JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.13, 2.14, or 2.15?
We do not.
Okay, excellent. We can have discussion, or I can certainly entertain a motion. Just as a reminder, I would need a motion that either it has to spell out items 2.13, 1.4, 1.5, or we can approach them each individually, or anything like that.
Madam President, I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.13, 2.14, and 2.15.
Second.
All right, motion by Clerk Rodriguez, seconded by Trustee Woodley. I see no lights on for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries five to two. Thank you so much. All right, that closes out Section 2 for our consent agenda items, and we'll move on to Section 3. And now, we have the true joy of, item 3.01 is the adoption of the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 23-004, a resolution of the Board of Trustees recognizing May 21st to 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome up Tammy Zimmerman, our Deputy Chief and Facilities Management Officer.
So I'm going to turn this over to Beth Leggenvower to talk about APWA, which is the facility that does this resolution for us, and let her talk, and then I'll come back and talk about my staff.
Good afternoon, my name is Beth Leggenvower. I'm the Chair of the Northern Nevada Branch for American Public Works Association this year. APWA is an international organization with over 600,000 members, and the Nevada chapter has recently grown to the second-largest chapter in the Western Region, so it's growing very strong. Our mission is to promote public works and provide education, training, certification, and networking opportunities to the public works community and our members, and we're very grateful for your support and involvement in APWA.
Thank you so much. And Beth, if I do say so, you have a wonderful name.
So I'm Tammy Zimmerman, I'm the Chief Facilities Management Officer, but I'm here to celebrate my staff. They do all of that hard work, you don't really get to see them, you get to see me, but not the behind-the-scenes kind of people, and they work tirelessly in our 102 sites, almost to be 103 in August, when we opened Jaywood Raw schools, and then our 11 support sites. They embody the APWA and working at our facilities to make sure that they're good for our students and our staff, and we really, really appreciate them. So I have a couple of them with me, and I'd like to, I'll introduce them, and if they'd stand up as I call their names. So I have Braden Horn, he is a project manager with our department. We stole him right out of school, he came in as an assistant project manager and crushed it, so he got to be promoted to a project manager, so we're really excited to have him. He works very hard. We have Andrea Bradford, she is an assistant project manager, and she is, has been responsible for a lot of our ESER Fund capital improvements, audio enhancements, lunch tables, also all of our Promethean boards and that, so she's doing a fabulous job, and we're so happy to have her. Next to that, I have Cody Lund, he is our grounds supervisor, and he is the epitome of customer service. He wants to make sure everything's right, he will, wants to be improving all the time with his staff, so we're very fortunate to have him as well. Next to him, I have Taylor Gerbl, he was in our grounds department, killing it in the grounds department, but we promoted him to a inspector in our construction department, and so really, really happy to have him, hard worker, which is awesome for us, we're truly blessed. Behind them, I have Jacob Zander, he is our new lead plumber in the district, and if you don't know, it's really hard to find a plumber right now. So we're so excited to have him, he has a great personality and is a customer service as well, so super excited to have him. And then beside him, I have Scott Wybe, he is the Assistant Director of Maintenance, so that's where all the calls go and the problem solving happens, and the people scurry out to take care of the issues. So Scott is a great supervisor for them, he used to be in the HVAC trades at Renown and that, so we stole him from Renown. So, super happy to have him. I'm super proud to be a part of the Facilities Management Department and the work that we do, because I feel like we do make a difference, and I want all our staff to know that we do make a difference, so thank you.
Thank you so much. When we think about the business of running these schools and district sites, these are the people that are actually making sure that everything is running, that children are warm, that children are dry, that we have locks that lock, I mean, every little detail that makes this machine run is done by the people here. Now, this is a really fun item, I am going to call for public comment, and then I have invited Trustee Adam Mayberry to read our resolution. It is an item for action, but then we're going to have all of you come up after we take the vote, so that we can take a photo as well, too. So JJ, do we have any public, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. I had to look up APWA, and I learned a lot, and I would like it if you could, one of you would share how complex and all over every inch of our infrastructure what public works does. I know, I know it's a big one, but this is important, I want people to understand.
So infrastructure, you're talking about everything and anything that is permanently, we talk about it a lot, permanently attached to a building, right? You shake all the stuff out, anything that stays is infrastructure, but we have sewer, storm drain, paving. We talk about it all the time, that we go from a door lock to an HVAC fan, to a pavement, to a toilet, problem solving all day long. Anything you can think of that is public use, streets, sidewalk, curb and gutter, storm drains, any of that, we do, and we touch it on a daily basis. It's, that's why we love our job, is it's different every day, it's problem solving, and we touch just about everything.
Thank you so much.
I have no public comment.
All right, well then I would like to invite Trustee Adam Mayberry, someone who knows and also personally supports public works and public service, to read our resolution.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm honored to do that, I'm so nervous. It's the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 23-004, it's a resolution of the Board of Trustees recognizing May 21st to 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in Washoe County School District. Whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Washoe County, Nevada. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, plumbers, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatments, all the waste systems, public buildings, schools, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Washoe County, Nevada, to gain knowledge of and to maintain and ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, there are hundreds of Washoe County School District staff who have dedicated their professional lives to constructing and maintaining public assets. And now therefore, the Board of Trustees do hereby recognize them May 21st to 2023 through May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the Washoe County School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry, for reading that beautifully, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And so now, I will accept a motion, you see the motion right here, my board?
Yeah, I'll move to approve this resolution.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Mayberry, seconded by Vice President Nicolet, to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion on this topic? Trustee Wesley, do you have discussion on the vote? No, okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Come on up, let's take a picture with you and show you our appreciation. Thank you. All right, that was wonderful. All right, and now we're going to close item 3.01 and move on to item 3.02. This is a conversation that I'm particularly excited about. This is part of our Quality of Education series, and we will be discussing and seeing a presentation of Native American culture and education programming in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion, and we are very, very pleased to welcome Fawn Hunter, our Indian Education Program Specialist, Denise Miles, our Native Youth Community Program Coordinator, and Ms. Julie Bryant from the Reno Sparks Indian Colony. I'd also like to give special appreciation and recognition to Clerk Rodriguez and Trustee Mayberry. As part of our process, as trustees, we are able to bring up items that we would like for discussion in the public, and they advanced this conversation for today. And we are very, very pleased and honored to have you, and look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon. Pia Tobino, my name is Fawn Hunter, I am the Washoe County School District Indian Education Specialist, we did put in for a name change for that Indian Ed. We have, with that, I'm under the federal grants, so we have two federal grants within our office, our Native American Culture and Education Program. The two grants that we have are the Title VI, which I'm the Project Director for Title VI, and also the Native Youth Communities Project that resides under our umbrella, under Family School Partnerships. I descend from the Duck Valley Paiute Shoshone Tribe, as well as the Pitt River Paiute Tribe, the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California, I'm a Well Melty Band Member. Today I have with me presenting my staff member, I'll let her introduce herself.
I'm Denise Miles, I'm the Native Youth Community Project Coordinator.
My apologies, we did change one of the slides, but we forgot to put it on there. So we do want to acknowledge and recognize the board, I appreciate and thank you for recognizing our land acknowledgement during opening of our schools. So our Great Basin and our First Nation people do appreciate you acknowledging us as you're opening some of our new schools and acknowledging our land acknowledgments. So this first slide is the definition of slides, so you did receive that with the data received, I just want to cover the 506 Eligibility Certification section, just to inform you all, the 506 is a form that's created by the Office of Indian Education through our federal process, it's a federal form that they've designed for our students and families to fill out. With the federal form, as you're aware, we as Native American carry, we are card-carrying individuals in the United States of America, so we have to put these card numbers on this 506 form in order to be eligible for the federal grants that we receive. So that's how we're making our students eligible under the Federal 20USC 7427, in order for them to participate in our programs, just so you're aware on the information we're covering. So with our first slide of data, this shows a student enrolled in our 506, so the base enrollment for the 506 form, which is on our website, a student can be enrolled through their own identification, their parents' identification, or their grandparents', that's three processes that they can be enrolled in our program. If one of them carry a tribal enrollment card, they can be a part of our program. As you see in this first slide, it shows the numbers and how we've had enrollment within our program. 2020 to 2021, we had 913. As we go through the years, this year, 2022, 23, was 885. This enrollment is due to the barriers and some of the stuff that had happened during COVID, as well as the opening of new charter schools. So we have students that are enrolling into other schools within our districts, so are outside of our districts, my apologies, that are lowering our numbers within our Title VI program. Our Parent Advisory Committee also makes the decisions and helps us focus on the needs within our community, within our Native American Culture and Education Program, and with our families, with the facets of schooling, homeschool, internet access, laptops, all the challenges that we had reached during those times. We, Delisa and I had collaborated with grants and proposed for the Native Youth Community Opportunity Grant, or Project Grant, I'm sorry. Now midway within our first year, we service 6th to 12th grades in a mentoring capacity, because we've seen the need within our district for the 506 students.
May I ask a question, Ms. Hunter? So I appreciate the education about the 506 designation. There is still a mechanism where students or families self-identify, but that is a different designation than the 506. Just for the sake of the public and for even my own education, would you mind expanding on that a little bit?
Yes, the way the Federal Office of Indian Education runs is they want to see the actual tribal documentation in order for us to qualify for these grants that we're receiving from the federal government, and with that, that's where they created their 506 form to, in case they wanted to audit us as a district, how many students, we keep these forms on file within my office, we keep their tribal documents. The tribal card that we carry is like a social security card with the United States, we have an actual identifying number that is associated with it, so we keep all those documents stored within our office in private for families. But it's really the documentation per the federal government of the federal guidelines of the grants that we receive, in order to just service those students that we receive documentation for. We do have self-identified, but unfortunately, we do need a form on every student in order to provide that information to the feds when we receive our grants.
Thank you so much.
So as you can see on this slide, these are our highest enrollments for students with 506 forms in the district, though we have students with 506 forms on file in every school in the district. The green stars indicate the highest populations for Pyramid Lake Paiute students, and the blue are for Reno Sparks Indian Colony students. Out of state includes students attending Pyramid Lake High School and some of the out-of-state boarding schools.
Okay, this one shows one of our First Nations language, which is Paiute, so we are, we have the Paiute language class under a very small budget, under Title VI. Under this grant, we service our 506 students, but we also open the class to non-506 students in this case. So you'll see the numbers where in our classrooms, they're growing in numbers. And this field, this actually, this class is growing to where Spanish Springs will be offering two classes next school year, and then Worcester has also decided to pick this class up in their streamline. This class is very important to our community and what we're supporting in our community. Our Paiute language has created Washoe County School District a sense of belonging initially. When it first opened in the 2000s, our students wanted something that they can, that represents them, so that was the reason why Paiute language was brought to the district initially. Ever since then, Title VI has carried that Paiute language in offering, but it's critical to our community indigenous partners, as we see in these slides, that it is important for our students to be offered some of this Paiute language, but also, it is important, we're asking some of the board's support as well, because our Title VI cannot carry this Paiute language all by itself, and we are offering to non-506 students to carry these in our classrooms as well. Our Paiute Language Bowl is very important as well, this is something that just recently happened, so our Paiute Language Bowl, I thank you for the trustees that did attend and the leadership that came out to our Paiute Language Bowl, the students to our Paiute Language Bowl. The students were very excited and prided themselves on this event. We had Pyramid Lake, I'm not Pyramid Lake, I'm sorry, we had McDermott Combined High School compete or middle school. We also had Fernley High School, which is new. The superintendent came out last year to observe. They offered the class this year for Yearington High School, and then they came and competed with Washoe County School District. So it's a fun event. Reed High School took first place. So we definitely, the students were very happy and excited that this is something they want to carry on. Title VI also covers AP and IB fees, as well as school supplies, backpacks, and other services academically that we provide to our students. We do provide academic supports, but this is through our Student Graduation Advocate initially. This was supported through our ESRS III. And ESRS III provided our SGA's to have full-time positions, 40 hours mentoring in the school. We had two that were allotted to us. Again, mentioning before, we did apply for the Tribal Youth Community Project. And under that, we have Tribal Youth Advocacy Specialists, the TIAS, that are mentoring. We have four of those specialists, and they row over to different schools servicing our students. And we have one ESRS left with us. In an Education Advisory Committee, the IEAC is under the state, under the governor. I'm the chair for that committee in order to support our district and our tribal needs within our support going both ways for that. We support education and academic any way we can within our district-to-district and collaboration.
So this slide highlights the graduation rates for students with 506 forms. Though they are still below the district average, the disparity is less than those students that are only self-identified. As Fawn mentioned, in '21, '22, we had two full-time graduation advocates and two part-time. This year, with the expansion into the Native American Community Project Grant, we've been able to add those four additional staff members to support our students.
So again, this is just a reminder, we are here to support our students academically. That is our mission for both grants, to support them. The 506, again, we're very, we have to stick to the 506 only because what I explained, it's actually a federal grant requirement for our federal grants to follow those regulations and rules within that. So with that, we do create tribal partnerships. And with our federally recognized tribes here locally, we do partner with Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe and Reno Sparks Indian Colony. We've overlapped and collaborated in many different initiatives. It's through language, through culture, through academics, where we've collaborated in different events together. We also, each representative, we have a parent advisory committee. Each partner has a voting official member, as also a parent advisory committee. Each one of our parents are within our district, and they have a 506 form on file on their child that represents that committee. So all of their concerns and needs come to us based on what their student needs and what they're aware of within their local schools. Annual tribal consultation within the district leadership, we do host that with grants. So that's all of our titles. We invite our tribal chairmans, as well as representatives, into the tribal consultation. It's not only a tribal consultation, we also try to schedule one-on-one meetings with leadership. And leadership did have those one-on-one meetings with our tribal leadership. We have MOU with the Paiute, Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and that's with our Native Youth Community Project Grant. When we wrote the grant, we created MOU with them in order to service and mentor their children. Native American Culture and Education Program, again, that's Paiute language and highlighted what I already talked about. We have our language classes in Spanish Springs High School. Next year, it'll have two classes. We had North Valleys. We had to continue that in the winter only because our numbers were slightly lower and our population had moved throughout the district. Reed High School, still fluctuating numbers, going strong. Worcester High School has a high number already trying to enroll, so I see Worcester's going to be pretty strong too. Again, Paiute Language Bowl is every year, every year we're hosted the Paiute Language Bowl. Because we're under Family School Partnerships, we use Family School Partnerships General Fund to support and our whole team to support the Paiute Language Bowl in order for it to happen every year. Additional services, again, students receive AP, IB fees, Natchez busing for soccer games. Title VI pays for that. We also pay for Native author's school books, school supplies, backpacks, mentoring support when needed. Our full-time SGA supported this year within our ESRS programs. And then I'll have Denise talk more about our NYCP.
Okay, so in the fall, we received the five-year multi-million dollar grant from the federal government for the Native Youth Community Project, which allowed us to hire the four tribal advocacy specialists we mentioned, myself and an evaluator. Our four tribal youth advocacy specialists are pro-techs, so they're bringing a number of years of experience with families and young people in the community to the work. And we will have them for the life of the grant cycle and hopefully through renewal. These mentors are following their students through those five years, so they'll stay with them. If they're an eighth grader now, they'll be with them through graduation. And then hopefully beyond, we'll be able to provide those services. We've started seeing students in January and have taken two college trips so far with our students. And we've seen gains already with a small but mighty group making improvements in risk, the level of risk of our middle school students we've been serving, which is great to see at such an early stage of the grant. This team of four serves over 400 students in the district. The grant also allowed us to have seats just for our native students, 506 forms, and Dean's future scholars at all levels of that program so that we can continue to support their aspirations beyond high school. And then outreach is the other big focus of our team, getting the word out there about the services we provide. And we've seen an uptick in families submitting the 506 forms in order to be able to receive those services in the district. And so these are our needs, addressing the lack of connection with education. So we have our mentorship, our college visits, the career and technical programs that we've been working through. The connection with the Paiute language course as well are all things that we're doing to build that connection. We've also been working with the Student Voice Program to bring that into schools, particularly with our native students, so that they feel that they're being heard about what their concerns and issues are in school. So our Tribal Youth Advocacy Specialists are building relationships with students. As we know, mentorship relationships are critical. But they're also using a structured program called Check and Connect to set quarterly goals and then reflect on those goals. This is building our students' independence and their self-advocacy and their self-accountability as well. They also work with school staff to ensure that school staff have the tools they need to be able to serve our students. But we can't do this work alone. We continue to build the program's network beyond the school district to support Native youth. We need the collaboration of our tribal communities and our tribal elders to continue to grow our program. As you know, we are combating the intergenerational trauma of our young people and their families in school settings at the hands of the government and the policies of the past. And part of that is making sure that they can see themselves in our schools. And so we work very hard to bring pieces of them into the school as well. So, and our outreach focuses on that too. We are working on building some Native American clubs in schools as well. So with current funding and our reliance on grants, we stand to lose our Student Graduation Advocate and our tribal elder who co-teaches in the Paiute language courses. And we hope to have the Support General Fund moving forward to support those programs. But we thank the board and the leadership for the support we have received.
Thank you very much. And I know we also have Ms. Julie Bryant here from the Reno Sparks Indian Colony. I imagine that some of our questions or thoughts may also be directed at her, so we wanted to say thank you again. I know that this is, this is a great topic, and I'm really glad that Clerk Rodriguez and Trustee Mayberry brought that up. And so I would first like to go to Clerk Rodriguez and then Dr. Enfield.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for all you guys do, especially for the tribal community. I know we're a very diverse community, and I don't think we maybe recognize the community as much as we should. So I think it's great that we have non-506 students attending our Paiute language classes. I think that's really swell. I don't know if I was going to say it, that's pretty cool. And I don't know, this is a question maybe for you or maybe for Julie, but I'm pleased to hear that we're addressing a lot of the needs that the tribal community is needing and has been, you know, long overdue. But I guess what are some of the barriers that might be unique to the Native American community that is impacting the graduation rates? Or if Julie's back there?
So I think during the pandemic, we saw the disproportionality of the impact of a lack of infrastructure and particularly our rural communities around internet and access to schooling that was having to happen remotely, ongoing. We have students with four hours on buses, which creates a real barrier to getting to and from school every day, especially if those buses are inconsistent in their timing. I would say too, just, you know, that lack of connection to education generally, that's kind of generational and working to heal that and making sure our parents know that they are, their child's best advocates and welcome in the school and their voices are heard in the school.
I would agree with Denise. It is a lot of the different impacts that she had mentioned. It's catching up now, of course, from pandemic, and it was just making sure that we hit some of those things that we didn't realize, how many people didn't have internet, how many people didn't have access to the computer, but that was their check-in. And then going forward, moving forward into, out of pandemic, but still having those expectations. And some of our older homes where our children are living with grandparents as guardians, then you have those homes that we couldn't get internet, even if we used the number to connect where it was a free service. They said it was 10,000 or more to connect those old homes. So it's really homes that we could not get that service. And that was, we tried the best we could with some of the resources that we had, but it was just the service was not available in those spots. So it's really moving forward and learning from that experience, not only our department, but as a whole district on how we can offer that service to our students and what's the best services we can offer. It's also the new two-mile transportation for some of our colony students and some of the barriers that they had. We had some incidents that had occurred in their walk to school and to middle school and/or some other things that was created. So then if it's really, our winter was kind of rough this winter. So if they weren't getting to school on time, it was walking that, you know, which most of our other students probably had those same barriers, but those were some of our barriers. Our parents building that trust within our district employees and our parents, it's that same, same thing, like she said, walking to school, feeling safe coming into the school, who can I talk to? That's why our mentors are there, so that way they can support that conversation with our parents going into the school if they're not comfortable yet and talking to the administration.
Thank you for that. And I do have one question, because one, Barry, that I have heard from a member of Pyramid Lake was that the grandparents today, it's not that long ago that they were actually going to school at the Stewart Camp. And so does that lack of trust from grandparents to this generation, are you guys still seeing that? And if so, how are you guys combating that?
Yes, we're still seeing that. That is still the big issue on trust between administration and the school and what is trustworthy coming into the school? And can I trust that the student or the, the school is handling my student's issue correctly? So most of the time, they'll come to us too. If they're not comfortable yet, we're trying to bridge that gap and be there to support them, introduce them to the administration in the building, get that relationship built so that way they feel more comfortable. But that's kind of our role, where we're trying to build the capacity of the parent, but also rebuild those bridges because it is still that historical trauma that Denise mentioned, that some of our parents and grandparents are still going through that, and that trust issue is still needing to be rebuilt.
Thank you. I have one last question. The Pyramid Lake High School, so I see our graduations are a little low, but are you guys accounting for the Pyramid Lake High School's graduation rates? So is there a potential that maybe there's higher graduations that's not being tracked?
So our graduation rate last year for 506 was 80% graduation rate. So we don't track Pyramid Lake High School, although I'm sure they have a different. I think theirs was pretty close to 100% last year. My son was part of that graduating class over there. So it's really that whole, the choice of the student, and then it's the capacity of what they hold over there, what at cap. But I think they really pride, if they're from that community, enrolled in that community, they pride, they have so much pride in that school, the young people do. So it's really a choice that they take between which school they stay in or they go to another school or where they want to graduate. But we have not taken the numbers from Pyramid Lake High School.
Because they're considered out of state, they're not included in the district counts.
Gotcha. All right. Well, thank you for informing us all this stuff today. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Fawn. I do want to emphasize the significance of the generational trauma and the challenges that that poses to our Native American students finding success in our public education system. And that's something that I think we have a responsibility to keep at the forefront. Having recently moved from the Seattle area, where our federally recognized tribe were the Muckleshoot, and having been committed to ways that we, as the public education system, can do better by our Native American youth and families, I'm wondering, has there been any conversation around the state for, and this was something that they did in Washington, which was to actually provide course credit for cultural experiences? So for example, the canoe journey, students who participated in that could actually get credit in high school for that. And I'm just wondering, are there any of those conversations, have any of those conversations happened here? Or might we want to reach out to some folks that are doing that and see if we want to bring it here?
So I have seen that at an Indian Education National Conference where they did present how they're putting that curriculum through. And it's a lot of the cultural component that's turned into our curriculum or through their state and how they pass that. So we had small conversation. I don't see it moving through the state yet, and that's kind of who we focus on. If the state moves it, then we kind of see if that's something we jump on board with. But it hasn't been, the state's curriculum is, they're revamping their curriculum this year, and it should be approved. I think it was just recently approved, but they're approving more of it, K through 12, that they're pushing out through their Office of Indian Education. But it hasn't really been tied in kind of what you're talking about. But that is an important part of our culture, and that is, it reminds me of one of the barriers too as far as attendance-wise, when it comes to our ceremonial, our death, our different things within our families. That's very important, and we take time out for that. And I know that some of our schools don't recognize those ceremonies or what they're about. And I get a lot of calls from the schools, is this a real thing? And I have to say yes or no, or explain to them what it is. So those have been some of the barriers too, some of our cultural things that we participate throughout the school year.
So we have some education to do with our staff, which we are committed to. And perhaps we could lead the state in this effort. And so if you'd like to have some subsequent conversation about how we can talk with NDE about going down this road, I would say that. And the other question I would have, and then I will be done, is I don't know whether at some point trustees would consider it appropriate for us to engage in conversation with our tribal elders and partners around a land acknowledgement at our meetings and how they would feel about that, whether that's appropriate, and something for us to take under consideration. So I just want to leave that there, and thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And I attended the Paiute Bowl, and that was wonderful. So the 506 form, do you have any sense of how many parents don't complete that form and why don't they?
So we do have a sense. We know the gap between, and it's about 1,500 students right now that are considered self-identified without a 506 form on file in the district. A large reason for that is that tribal identification number is a social, essentially a social security number. It's how you receive your services. And so there is a lot of trepidation, that lack of trust with the school district. If I give you my number, who else can see it? What are you doing with it? So Fawn has done a great job of making sure it's protected in Infinite Campus so that only really our team can see those numbers. We did create a tribal flag this year so that other staff in the school can see which students are eligible for services kind of just at a glance, which was a big step forward this year. But yeah, I think that that's a large reason.
It's also United States-recognized tribals. So there, we do have some across the border in Canada and are down south that are tribal members. But because of course we have borders, but then there are local tribes within our United States too, the borders don't allow them to participate within the 506 because it's, the cards were generated through the United States government, so.
Is there some strategy we can implement to help those families gain some trust so they can, I don't know, get on board, so to speak?
So our team is doing outreach regularly. We send We send letters to all the families at the beginning of the year and then again, but we're also personally contacting, the mentor for each of those schools is personally contacting families to talk about it. We've been showing up at schools for outreach nights and have gained some traction there by putting faces to names. And we've been reaching out to invite families to let them know we'll be there before so they know to come talk to us.
And some are misidentified too, we realized. And so if they're misidentified, because when they self-identify, they accidentally hit tribal in their registration, we ask them to go back to the register and sometimes they just don't, so it'll be repeated over and over. And we just kindly say, can you please ask your register to remove that? But it, you know, parents are busy too, so they don't always get the chance to get those removed.
Thank you, Vice President Nicolet. I think that's a really important question because there are services and benefits that are unlocked through this very specific designation and we would want to make sure to connect our families and our students to all the help. And then we also know that there is funding based on the quantity in students that we have identified. Trustee Mayberry and Ivy, I see your lights on. I wanted to very briefly though, see if Ms. Julie Bryant wanted to come up because my question is going to be a tag team between the two of you. So I know we're talking about connection to schools. I know that absenteeism is something that we work on and I know that being as we represent an organization and there is generational distrust with that. And that's where our partnerships come in with our partners that are actually within our tribal communities to really help and to pair with that messaging and the conveyance of trust that exists and that we build. I would really like to hear more about how we're working together to really reach these families, connect them to their education and then get them to school in a way that will benefit their education and their graduation rates.
Just go ahead. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Board. Julie Bryant, Reno Sparks Indian Colony Education Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Since the grant has gone through, we have had a little bit of growing pains, I would say, with the school district because our program was designed, how the new program with the school district is designed now. So, but you know, sadly, we were not able to support as much as your opportunity does, so that's very much a benefit. So you know, they see their advisors in schools much more frequently. You know, we have to have FERBA signature signed forms to share any documentation, so that sometimes puts limits on us as well. Again, that trust with families and things, but so with the school districts program, you guys have the opportunity to meet more students, check their grades, see more specifics than I see than we have access to. But we continue to work with the Indian program in every way and you actually have taken some of our staff members from Reno Sparks Indian Colony, so, and I know they are very useful in the school district. So, you know, we taught them well. There you go. But you know, we continue and you know, some of this happened mid-year, so you know, we're kind of working to that as well. But Fawn and I do communicate regularly and our language department was supporting in the schools as well. That kind of went back to, you know, you having your own program again as well within the schools. So it's a great opportunity for Washoe County School District, Reno Sparks Indian Colony. We just got to kind of work out those quirks on how we can all work together a little differently now. But I think the support that you're offering is much more strengthened than what we could offer, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Student Representative Ivy Batmaw followed by Trustee Mayberry.
Thank you so much, President Smith. So I had one question for the graduation advocates. Do those only go to the students who have 506 plans or do they go to all students who identify as Native American?
So there's student graduation advocates that will be initially started their program on. Title VI can only afford part-time employees, so they were only working 18 hours a week to service all of our students. As we grew, ESRS then gave us the two full-time positions and then we applied for this grant. We still need, of course, that SGA that's in there, which student graduation advocate is a little bit different because when our department was in equity and diversity, they had student graduations for all students or it was really based on, you know, where they land on the need. But our students are currently just served by the 506 student, or 506 form.
Okay, thank you. I only ask because, so at my school, we have obviously, I go to Incline High School, so we have a very, very small Native American population. However, the two students that we did have, it seemed as though they, the district was sending up a graduation advocate for them to go and see, to make sure that they were on track, but it was miscommunicated. So our school didn't find out till much later that they were coming and didn't have enough time to notify the students. And so when the students went into the meeting, the students felt very targeted and they felt like they were perpetually being told like, you're not going to graduate because of who you were, instead of like an uplifting experience. They understood where everybody was coming from, but I think it was just a very large miscommunication on the entire front. So when you guys are sending advocates, do you try and notify the schools or, okay?
So the each TAS or the SGA, we send initial letters to the administration. So they do know who's assigned to the school, who they are, and then who our staff are. So admin does receive that. The second part to that is some of our students are identified as Native American and they carry a card, but because of the historical trauma that occurred, it's not talked about in the families all the time, but the family will enroll them into our program so they don't have the cultural background, they don't have all of the other information that comes along with that. So when we come to visit, it's the parent that signs them up, it's not the student. So then that's where the bridge has to be regapped because the parent will come in and say, yes, I want my student to be a part of this. But then it's the communication between the parent and the student that sometimes doesn't happen and they're not aware of their cultural identity and that's where the miscommunication comes in.
Thank you. Yeah, and we also have had some students express that other staff or students have made them feel uncomfortable about going and like, oh, you're going because you're Native or saying comments like that, that can make someone feel a certain kind of way about that too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions. I think the other trustees did a great job. Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you, Julie. And I learned a great deal. This is an area that I, for one, don't know a lot about, so it was very enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This was an outstanding item and we really appreciate you being with us and for the recommendations that you've made and things that we will think about. So thank you very, very much. And thank you so much, Ms. Bryant, for coming out as well too. Please extend all of our respect and appreciation to the colonies. Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. All right, so that closes item 3.02. And we're going to hold on item 3.03. Our school team will not be with us until a little bit later in the afternoon. And so now we will move ahead to item 3.04. This is the presentation and discussion on the progress and schedule of the district-wide strategic planning process conducted by Performance Fact. This item is for presentation and discussion only. And providing this presentation will be Dr. Susan Enfield, our superintendent, and Mutu Fagbay, the president of Performance Fact.
Want me to kick off?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, President Smith, and well done on the pronunciation of Mr. Fagbay's name. I want to welcome Rose and Mutu with us today. They are actually doing double duty as they sit here. They're also somehow facilitating a planning meeting that's happening at TMCC. So congratulations on being in two places at once. I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank not just Rose and Mutu for their facilitation with this, but to Michelle Anderson and our communications team and all of the community members, staff members, students, families that have given their time and expertise to this process. We have worked hard for this to be as inclusive as possible. I have said before, I will say it again, the end product, the plan itself, really isn't as important as the process by which we develop it. And then of course, how disciplined we are in implementation, which we'll talk about later. But I am incredibly excited by where we are in the process and look forward to this update so that the Board can have a plan, finished plan brought before them on June 13th for potential adoption. Mutu, I'll give it to you.
Am I on?
You're on.
Good afternoon, everyone. President Smith, nice to meet you. Trustees, thanks for giving us some of your time. We just wrapped up a full day with the Instructional Focus Team, that's primarily teachers and instructional staff and about 39 people showed up today, did some really good work. When we leave here this afternoon, we have the alignment team, that's the team we call the Movers and Shakers. That's the meeting at 5:00 PM also today. So it's been a full day. The last time we met with you was about a month ago, I think it was April 12th or 13th. So they, since we last saw you, we've met with virtually every team at least once. In fact, we've had two community forums since then. We've had sessions with students and we've had a couple with the superintendent's leadership team also. Then the content of the plan at this point is what you have in front of you. And as Dr. Enfield said, we expect to have it done by, we're well ahead of the June 13 date. On the very first slide is not only the framework we've following, but also the progress of each one of those three circles. So the plan, as Rose mentioned last time, has three distinct parts. Everything for us begins with students, so that's circle number one. Then with that white instruction, circle number two, because it's, the real magic is when student, teacher and content come together. So we elevate that, what's called instructional core, to a higher level. But the students and the teachers can't do by themselves without the infrastructure to support them. That's where facilities come in, parent engagement, community involvement and so on. And as you can see on the screen, most of, in fact, virtually everything that needs to come to the Board on June 13 is in pretty good shape. They're all green already. The yellow ones will get into the implementation phase, which will, which will work on with the superintendent and her team post-June 13. So we spent today, for example, just tightening things up, clean up by the teachers. And if I could ask you to, actually, I can go there, I suppose. We've seen that. Going to just review these status of the key components, the promise. From what I picked up last time, there was strong sentiment on the part of the Board that we highlight the importance of partnerships with our families and community. So you can see the new version of the promise statement includes that. Now, the 39 teachers that came this morning all day, they had something to say about that. The idea makes sense, well, probably because they grade papers all the time. They make comments about, you know, sentence construction, but nothing about the content, what the phrase, and which we share with you later on. No, so on these.
Mutu, for the record, I was an English teacher. And I am a fan of the complex sentence. So to my, to my teacher colleagues out there, I apologize, but this is actually a structurally sound sentence, though it may be somewhat long.
I'm not going to comment. So the, the promise and the portrait are fine. They had some discussion about joy, way of fitting and so on, but by and large, it's held really well. The goals and the measures that followed them also haven't changed since the early April dates with the Board. No substantive changes to call your attention to. On the measures, which would be how we'll track our progress, what's the goal? We had a really fruitful meeting with Joe Ernst and Laura Davidson, and they gave some feedback on what the stakeholders have proposed to make sure these are things we can actually measure and monitor well. And it looks pretty solid. The teachers today didn't have any major concerns about it. So, and then the last part, this is why the Board weighed in also last time, it's around the four pillars and the beam. You made a case for having the safety and connection as a foundation of the plan. And cognitively, foundation goes to the bottom, but we have this foundation on top because it's, it's the overriding component that crosses off our pillars. So that's the last part of what will come back to the Board on June 13. The last I want to touch on, you know, very quickly, would be the Instructional Focus Team, the teacher team, they've taken these foundations and defined very explicit professional practices. So how would we know when a teacher in our school system is implementing pillar A well? And how would we know what the leadership does and what happens at a district level? So there's a one-page outline of the practices by teachers, by leaders and by the district as a whole, but all that's part of the implementation phase. So that's the update we have, no substantive changes, no concerns. We had a survey done and about 1,100 people responded, you know, by and large. For most of the responses, about high 60s to low 70% satisfaction rate. There was only one that was a little bit lower than the rest, but we think it was because of the way the question was phrased. So even the feedback from the stakeholders have been very positive based on the survey. That's really all we have to share. At this point, we'll take our questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fagbay. This is wonderful and I have, I'm, get ready, Vice President Nicolet, so I'm going to ask you a question here. This is our first time seeing some of the changes that this Board requested in our workshop and I am really happy to see that foundation at the top going to our earlier conversation because we had a work session this morning and we talked about the behavior manual and our WEA president, President Kalen Evans, you know, talked about how you can't get to any of these pillars unless you have that safety and connection. And I really appreciate the visual change here and I see the feedback that we provided in our workshop reflected in this new working version and so I'd like to say thank you. Now I'd like to invite Vice President Nicolet, who doesn't know I'm going to ask this, but I know that you, you really carried the flag on integrating the importance of families, inviting them in and then sharing that responsibility, which I see right here nurtured through shared responsibility for student success. I love that. But this was a flag that Vice President Nicolet really carried. And so I wanted to hear your thoughts on this and how that family connection is reflected in this.
Mind? I'd like to go to the previous slide.
This one?
Well, it's, my page number's number seven. It is Goals and Measures of Student Progress.
There we go.
There you go. I understand that there's a difference between how goals and measures of student progress look inside the walls and outside. And what I see missing here is, and thank you for asking that question because you did listen, but now I'm getting into the nitty gritty.
Excellent.
Parents, families, whatever the dynamics, are so important to helping their students and teachers meet goals and measures of their students' progress. And I see a lot of measures here, all of them make sense and they're very straightforward, which I like because sometimes they're just complex and they're, they almost seem unattainable. These are attainable. What I don't see is how the family dynamics help, help us meet those goals and measures of their students' progress.
Okay, that's coming, it's coming very soon to our location area. And that's where the strategies come in. And they were coming in two ways. So if I could go back to the beginning slide, this one. So families and teachers and community folks are all in circle two and circle three. And we do it that way because we really want to start by putting the emphasis on student, outcomes for students. So if you look in the sub-line here, it says keeping ends and means in proper sequence and everything we've presented so far is about circle number one. When we get to circle number two, where we talk about those pillars, we begin to flush out what you're asking for. So they'll be there in detail in terms of strategies and also in terms of some metrics. So we have metrics for kids, we will have metrics for the adults also. It just isn't, we're just not there yet. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. That, that makes great sense and I probably have made a few enemies now that parents are going to have metrics, but thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Well, I don't see any other lights on, so. Well, I don't see any other lights on, so I wanted to say thank you so much. I will tell you anecdotally that I have had people come up to me and teachers that have said, we are so excited about this. They've been involved. I've been at community events. We were at a Washoe K-12 Schools Foundation Lunch. I had community members that represent different businesses and nonprofit organizations that are a part of this, and they were gushing about the process. So I just want you to know that that's the word on the street. So, thank you so much. Wonderful. All right. So that closes Item 3.04. And now we will move on to Item 3.05. This is our Presentation of Human Resources, our HR Assessment, completed to identify the strengths, gaps, and opportunities for improvement as it relates to the Washoe County School District's Human Resources Department and its current functions. This is also an item for presentation and discussion. And we welcome Dr. Christina Mason, our Chief Talent Officer. Welcome, Dr. Mason.
Thank you. Through the President and the trustees, Dr. Enfield, I am Dr. Christina Mason, the very proud Chief Talent Officer for the Washoe County School District. I've been on my post since February of 2023, and I would like to first open by saying that we are very grateful for the partnership of the Urban Schools Human Capital Academy under the leadership of Dr. Elizabeth Erns to really help us dig in and to see where we can improve and iterate differently. I'd like to move us to the next slide. So of course, the purpose, and thank you again, President Smith, the purpose of this assessment was really to identify our strengths, our gaps, and the opportunities that we have to improve and iterate differently. I often say to the team in my care that feedback is a gift. And it's a gift because when we know better, we do better. And I think we've heard our superintendent say that many, many times. With that being the case, I do want to name the areas of care that the Washoe County Human Resources Department has. So on the talent side of the House, we provide recruitment and growth opportunities and capacity building for every one of our 8,000 employees as the largest human resources department in Northern Nevada. Additionally, we support risk management in all aspects of that endeavor, wellness, the benefits of the employees in our care. On the professional growth side of the House, we support systems of evaluation, systems of mentorship, and professional growth and capacity building. Additionally, we help to support pipeline so that we can ensure that all of our, all of our departments and schools have the caring adults that they need. So in looking at the next part, we wanted to identify and highlight for you what the objectives for this project were. Again, it was about feedback, but additionally, it was about providing an opportunity for baseline so that we could really, truly look to see if the services that we were providing were coherent and aligned with district goals, that our department was not only working effectively, not only as its own functions, but with other departments and in service to the adults in our system who have the, the great responsibility to be on the front line with students. We also wanted to just create a calibrated baseline so that we're talking apples to apples and oranges to oranges as we're looking at our data. And then we wanted to understand the perception of the services and programs that we provide as a human resource and human capital department to ensure that we were truly in line with the vision and mission of our district. Urban Schools Human Capital Academy, Dr. Erns and her team led this deep dive into our data. We did provide the data. Her team did all of the number crunching and comparisons and things of that nature. There were 56 district stakeholders that were involved in this. These were one-to-one conversations at the chief level. There were multiple focus groups with teachers and new teachers, principals, district leaders, and staff from the Human Resources Department. And so when we look at how quickly this, this, this took place, this was a lion's lift of work, but it happened in a very short amount of time, I would say. So the assessment was actually conducted, and those, those interviews and focus groups happened in March and April. We delivered preliminary results to the Human Resources Leadership Team, the team in my care, and to the, the district leadership team and the superintendent in April. As you will see from the executive summary report that you received on Friday, there were 41 recommendations that came back. And so the Human Resources Leadership Team did convene to try to begin to look at all of those recommendations and rank them based on how, how impactful that change or adjustment might be. And then we matched it with both complexity to, to really name that we are a, a part of a larger system. And so sometimes when we move things, it moves things for other people. And so we have to be mindful of that and, and be very clear in how we were ranking, how we would move forward. All right. Now, with some of those, with those 41 recommendations, I would like to highlight some really early actionable steps that we were able to take or to start, right? There are some that take a little bit more time, a lot more collaboration. And so we'll get into what those are in the next slide. But here, I'd really like to highlight for you some quick ones, if you will. So under the leadership of Dr. Enfield, we had initiated the Zero Day Benefit Project. You'll hear more about that from our interim manager, Ms. Laura Thurston, soon. We have alignment and collaboration with other Washoe County School District Departments. I will say that systems coherence is very important to us at the executive leadership level. And so we work very hard, day in and day out, to ensure that we are collaborating across departments and sharing our findings and inviting other chiefs and their teams to the conversation has been evidence of that. We've been able to initiate a declaration of intent process so we know ahead of time if we have retirees coming up, if people are intending to return to their same classroom, same job, or if they're looking for a change of location or a change of assignment. So we've been able to initiate that. We've been able to leverage pooled generic teaching postings so that our job board, instead of having maybe a few hundred open positions, we can say, we're looking for first-grade teachers in Washoe County schools. And so we were, were able to not only pool those postings, but create an opportunity for principals to see who are, who's in those pools a lot sooner. We are looking forward to the work this summer to update our Careers webpage and make it very attractive and informative for prospective Washoe County School District employees. And we are also in the process of updating our department logo. Branding is important. Our mantra has been, we are the heart of Washoe County as the school district Human Resources Department. And so we're working very diligently on that. And we are also in the process of streamlining and making very clear our processes and staffing calendar so that I, timelines are clearly identified, and we can ensure that everyone has the same information. Now, some of those, the next steps that we will undertake just have to do with, let me see, I think I missed the critical needs. I need to go back a slide. So I was in a groove and I just kept moving. So if we go back to these top three critical needs, it's very important to understand, these are foundational. They really, truly are. The narrative has been provided to you, but the upgrade of our Human Resources back system is necessary. We find that we have lost functionality, and we often, the "we" is actually the brilliant team in my care that continues to work on this day in and day out. We're making fixes and solutions to try to get just typical work done, right? And so that takes away time, attention, and talent on some of the more high-leverage endeavors, which would include our technicians and staffs being in schools and learning what schools need and collaborating with principals on ways to attract and retain staff in their buildings. Also, we need to evaluate our department's structure and organization. We have a lot, I like to say to Dr. Enfield and to Dr. Keo, we have brilliant people doing good work, but it's not the work that we need to have done right now to move our mission forward and to ensure that the adults on the front line have what they need from our department to be successful. Additionally, we are looking at the establishment of an HR partner role. So this is a little bit different than what a traditional HR quote-unquote department would do. This would allow for members of our team to be assigned to our areas, they're not area chiefs anymore, they're associate chiefs in the Teaching, Learning, and Leadership Department. And the reason that's important is because they will be able to know the needs and staffs of our schools intimately and work as a partner with both the principal and the associate chief to ensure that the staffing is matched according to need and program in each of our buildings. That is a very powerful adjustment, and we are ready and excited to do it. But we have to first tend to the first two. So as we continue to iterate and build a plan and elevate those needs with Dr. Enfield and the executive leadership team, those three are going to be top of mind for us. So now I'm in the right place. When we look at our next steps, we are in the process of finalizing a very drafty draft of timeline with these prioritized, with these priorities prioritized in that plan to Dr. Enfield. I will continue the collaboration with my colleagues, the chiefs of the various departments, our department staff, and other stakeholders and partners to make sure that we are absorbing the recommendations, pacing them out appropriately, and in working particularly with our Program Evaluation Department, setting metrics of success so that we can continue to iterate forward. And then we hope to launch in collaboration with some other department structures in sometime in August, what our new structure will look like for the remainder of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason, and welcome. I believe this is your first formal presentation to the trustees, so well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to provide a little context, make some comments, and then of course, open it up to the trustees for questions. We actually initiated this assessment with Betsy Erns from prior to Dr. Mason joining us. And I, I want to emphasize the rapid pace at which this work has happened. Dr. Mason has hit the ground running and has taken the findings from this report and, at the same time, gotten to know a new team and incorporated these findings into changes to the team. It's been a lot. So I just want to say that there are lots more details coming. I want to make that very, 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 very clear. What you are seeing right now is the sort of the preliminary phase of where we are in the findings. I think it's important that we give Dr. Mason and our wonderful HR team time to make sense of this for themselves and to make the changes within their team that are necessary in order to act upon some of these, these things. I, I will say this, and the, the items that you, you mentioned, the HRMS, is that, am I getting that right?
Yes.
I'm horrible with acronyms. There it is. The upgrade to the HRMS system, evaluating structures and organization, establishing an HR partner role. President Smith asked, obviously, there are dollars attached to some of these changes. I, in talking with Mark Mathers, we have already made a commitment and have budgeted to shift away from Business Plus. The, the screaming and excitement you hear in the background is anyone who uses Business Plus, knowing that that will be going away. Mark Mathers has said that he believes there are systems out there that will include an HRMS system within it. So we may likely not have to do two separate implementations. And Dr. Mason is nodding, so that's excellent news. Evaluating the department's structure and organization, I will be forthcoming. Dr. Mason has put forward some additional positions she would like to see in her organization. I can't commit to that right now because we don't have a budget. But we are also looking for, are there efficiencies that we can create as well and move things around and reassign work, change some of the work that our folks are doing to, to deliver on these assessments? And similar to that is the HR partner role. This is something that I'm very familiar with. We did it in my former district. I will say, it's easier to do when you are not short-staffed. Strategic staffing can only be done when you have people to staff with. That said, this, this work will take time, but I am very, very confident that so much of what we've talked about today with respect to the budget and really investing in our people, the strategic plan, that is going to be an incredibly wonderful recruiting tool for our folks. The changes we're making in zero-day benefits that Laura has worked so hard to lead and will updating us on, all of these things, I think, are going to help us recruit. And preliminary numbers are looking positive for August. We still have a ways to go. But this, this work will just keep coming, and Dr. Mason will update us as it happens. But I'm incredibly excited about this because saying that our HR team are the heart of the Washoe County School District is actually, you know, and Laura and Kate and Katie Louise are here, is really, really true. And I, I just also want to be clear that we will be preparing a memo for our principals in particular about some of the changes that will impact them in a positive way moving forward because remember that our theory of action as central office leaders is we get up every day and we show up here to put the conditions in place for our principals so they in turn can support and put the conditions in place for their staff so they in turn can make it happen for kids. So what we really want to make sure is that our Human Resources team is laser-focused on how are we putting those conditions in place for principals, not that we're ignoring everyone else. I want to be clear on that. We care about everybody in the system. But, but we really need to get that piece tight so that our principals can do the job that we need them to do. And, and I do want to just say one more thing. We heard some public comments earlier. I have heard from many people concerns that people have with our HR work in the district, perceptions that it is not fair, perceptions that it may be personality-based, lots of things like that. You've heard allegations of retaliation and people being afraid to speak up. I have been crystal clear, and Dr. Mason and I are no daylight between us on this issue, and I want it on the record, that we, we will never, ever abide a culture that retaliates against our colleagues for speaking truth. We will, we will always make sure that our staff feels that they have an open door to me, to Dr. Mason, to the direct supervisor. We want to get better, and we only get better when we listen and we're honest with where we need to improve. And so it's going to take us time to get there because some people have not had good experiences with our HR team, and we have to acknowledge that. And you don't change people's belief systems until you change their experiences. So my commitment to my colleagues and our team across this district is, your experience is going to change. And as your experience change, I, I hope more than anything that your belief and faith in us as a system and how much we value you changes as well. And I want to thank Dr. Mason for her leadership in this charge.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much. I am very excited about this assessment. Having gone through things like this on the corporate side, this is a vulnerable experience. But what I love about this is that it brings the expertise of subject matter experts that have the benefit of seeing these systems across the country. They know best-case uses, they know districts that are like us, they see creative ideas and how they've worked. It also removes being a new leader and coming in and saying, well, I think this is the way we should do it. It really adds that layer of objectivity to it that I think is very, very healthy. And I'm very excited to see some of these recommendations. And it also just doesn't, it doesn't position teams or people against each other about who has ideas or how we've historically done things. It's an opportunity to bring in another set of eyes and to review a new direction and, and a fresh chapter that we're really building with all of this, which really does make organizational changes much more palatable. So again, having gone through that on the corporate side. So I'm very excited to see this direction about getting this type of subject, subject matter expert expertise brought into this so that we can make the best decisions. So I think this was a very wise investment.
Agreed. Thank you, President Smith.
I would just like to add that much like our Public Works is responsible for our infrastructure, light switches, sewer, and everything in the physical plants, HR is responsible for every single employee at every single level. And that's a yeoman's job, and it is the heart of what we do because it's about people. Thank you. And I look forward to this too. It's going to be awesome.
It will be. And I like to tell the team, we are the only department that touches employees before they become employees, and then we carry them through their career in the depart, in the district. And we're the last person that they talk to and engage with. and engage with on their way out. So whatever adventure lies for them beyond that. So we are very proud to do this work, and we love it.
And I would say I hope you take this as a compliment. That reminds me of the bus driver. They're the first person the kiddo sees in the day and the last one at night. So that's you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. As Dr. Mason mentioned, that we're the last people talked to when they leave our system, a number of trustees have raised the issue of exit interviews with me. And so that prompted me. So you're welcome. I was channeling Clerk Rodriguez. Dr. Mason, and I'm throwing you a curveball here. We haven't had this conversation specifically yet. Have there been any discussions yet around how we can encourage more of our employees when they do exit the system to share with us what their experience has been?
Actually, the HRLT and I have had some preliminary conversations. We're very, very grounded in data. And one of the things that we realized is that we didn't have a lot of great data on why people were leaving and recommendations, how we were mining those great recommendations that they have on their way out. And so we are working on building a formal process for that that can be initiated either with us or at their site, wherever they work.
That is fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate your time, and we really look forward to seeing what comes next with all of this.
Thank you. I'll wait for Laura.
Yeah, because you're not actually going anywhere. So I didn't actually say goodbye. I just said, thank you. So we will go ahead and we will close item 3.05. Sorry. And that goes ahead, and that closes item 3.05. And now we'll move on to item 3.06. This is the Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to approve the change to the employee benefit eligibility waiting period from 90 days to zero days beginning July 1, 2023, for an approximate annual total of $1 million, as recommended by the Group Insurance Committee. This is an item for possible action. And she has not gone anywhere. Dr. Christina Mason, our Chief Talent Officer. And we also welcome Laura Thurston, our Risk Coordinator. So here comes that first action item for us.
The first action. Here we go. Well, I'm going to just turn it over to Ms. Thurston. She has led this charge and has led both the Steering Committee of cross-departmental collaborative people in addition to worked to, with a working committee made up of cross-collaboration of departments. So Ms. Thurston.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Laura Thurston, for the record. So this is a highlight of our Zero-Day Benefit Wait Project Initiative that Dr. Enfield has brought to us. These have, this conversation started actually in 2021 with our Group Health Insurance Committee looking for the ability to potentially decrease our eligibility period for our benefits, which is currently 90-day wait for eligible employees to wait for benefits. So this project eliminates that wait period and enables a benefit-eligible person to begin benefits as soon as their first day of work. I'm sorry. Okay. Along with that, the initiative supports recruitment, retention, and of course, values all the WCC staff for their work. Some of the project objectives are obviously to provide health insurance on their first day of work, to create and foster a culture of care and health for all of our employees, to create department and school site efficiencies and processes in relation to hiring, onboarding, and benefit information, and also to provide a collaborative and welcoming onboarding experience for new hires. These are a couple of the committees that we have working on this initiative. And I would like to emphasize that there's at least three times as many employees that are actually working on this initiative currently. So this is touching several different departments, even outside of HR. Businesses working on this. Position control, excuse me, payroll, all of our areas. So we are extending this project not only from allowing benefit-eligible employees to receive benefits on their first day of work, but also trying to create and foster a better experience with the onboarding process for our employees as well. A summary milestone schedule. Okay, so the Group Health Insurance Committee approved this action on February 22. We began condensing our eligibility period on April 2. So what that means is those employees who are hired April 2 to June 30 will begin benefits on July 1. That way, they're not overlapping and having a later benefit eligibility period than somebody beginning on July 1. So we've started that process. We've also created a cloud-based universal hiring rec. And essentially, what that is, is that's the way our internal processes happen in terms of hiring administrators, sending in their elective candidate for hire and how it's processed internally through our business department and then to our HR department, et cetera. So that UHR process became live this week. We also have the WCS Welcome project that we are beginning. And that is essentially a new hire orientation. It's in-person. It will be mandatory. We have a space here in our Building B. We've created a registration process that is connected to our cloud-based UHR. So they'll be receiving a link for registration. They'll be able to register. We'll be gathering information, sending things out for them, sending information about benefits, et cetera, out ahead of time so they can prepare, but also know what documents to bring to their orientation. And then potentially beginning work around two weeks after that and having their benefits effective on their first day of work. So with that, I'll take questions. The one piece on here, and it was read earlier, but it's the additional cost for this is approximately $1 million. It is the cost that, for the three-month period that we don't currently cover as a district. So that would be in addition for, just for the new hires coming in. Any questions?
Thank you, President. Thank you, Laura. I want to publicly thank Laura for her leadership on this and for not just moving forward on this with the bare minimum, but actually working with the team to take a more comprehensive approach to this. So this notion of looking at onboarding. So it wasn't just how do we provide benefits? It's how do we provide a better welcoming experience to people who join the Washoe County School District team? Because we want the word on the street to be, this is a great place to work, right? You want to come here. And I am well aware that there is a price tag attached to this, but I also think there's a cost to not doing it. The cost associated with not having teachers in our classrooms on the first day of school, scrambling for bus drivers, all of these things. I just have to believe that knowing that they will have healthcare, which in a post-COVID era, everybody knows is essential, is going to make a difference in the decisions people make about where they want to come work. And I also want to say this, and Laura touched on it, and I'm so glad that you did. Every decision we make communicates our values. And we have to be communicating that we value our people. We will invest in them. We will take care of them and that we want them here. And so I just applaud you and the team for taking this crazy new superintendent's idea last August and looking at me and thinking to yourself, there's just no way, lady. There's just no way. And you found a way. And so thank you. I'm deeply grateful.
My pleasure.
I would agree. And my question comes with a kind of a help you understand where I'm coming from, a million dollars. I think it's worth every penny, especially if it meets the goal of bringing people in, people wanting to stay, people spreading the word, and we get to where we need to be. And it's not a one-time cost. So what number did you use to come up? How'd you come up with a million dollars?
It's approximately the amount of new hires that we have per year. It's a little over 100, but it depends over here, right? How many new teachers we're using. I think for this number, it's a little over 100, maybe 100, 130. Sorry, I don't have that number in front of me. But it's the monthly health insurance premium times 12. Or times three, excuse me, for those 90 days.
And I am trying to be specific, which is? I really would like to know the number of people because this informs many levels. And then how much is it each month?
So if you noticed, perhaps Vice President Nicolet, Mark Mathers and Jeff Bozo were members of our Steering Committee. And so these numbers came in collaboration with them in the business office. But we can follow up with you to get that exact formula.
I appreciate that. And it really is just a wanting to understand and have the information.
Of course.
Because I think the idea is great.
Got it.
Are there any other clarifying questions? So this is an item for action, so we will have public comment. But Trustee Church.
Okay, I probably missed it. How are we budgeting it? How, where's the money coming from?
The majority of it will be Fund 10.
You what now?
The majority will be Fund 10, our general fund.
Fund 10.
I'm sorry. I talk in numbers, so I apologize. I apologize.
I'm not the smartest.
No, it's like secret code, internal code. I apologize. However, we have other, as you know, we have other employees who are funded by other funds outside of our general fund. So there will be a smaller amount that would also be funded by those. It depends on where their salaries are coming from. That's also where their benefits are funded.
Now, this, I guess is clarifying. The one thought that I got, what stopped somebody from taking a job with the school district? Probably, you know, we're not going to see teachers go through the whole process, but on the lower level, the day they get hired, suddenly they, oh, by the way, I need a hip replacement and knee replacement and everything else. And the day they get it done, they quit. Have we thought that through?
Laura, could I say something? Trustee Church, is that okay, President Smith? My team now is very used to hearing me say this. We don't set policy and practice based on outliers and bad actors because that hurts the vast majority of people who are going to show up and do the right thing. We deal with those outliers and those bad actors as needed. But to create policy based on something that might happen on a few people, I don't think is the right move for the system. And Laura may be able to fill in sort of how we might mitigate that. But I just feel very, very strongly that we need to move away from making decisions based on what we think a few people might do versus what the vast majority need and deserve.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I, when an employee leaves the district or when they go unpaid, their benefits are terminated. So could that situation potentially happen? Possibly. But also, if they just begin their work, they're most likely not going to have a lot of time accrued, potentially. Therefore, they would potentially go unpaid and therefore have no benefits. So there are lots of different situations around that. So I'm not saying that it's a perfect situation. But I don't know that it would always happen. On top of that, the Insurance Committee is discussing some other ways to implement items within our plan document that would potentially safeguard against some of those areas as well. But it's hard to speak to every single situation. Yeah. Yeah.
I think it's a valid question. I really do. But what I'm hearing is, or maybe if somebody goes on unpaid leave, what about maternity leave, paternity leave?
So I'll jump in here, Trustee Church. So when it comes to leave accrual that's available for a staff member to be out of work, they must have earned that time. And so that varies from employee to employee, depending on what, okay? So with that being the case, an employee would have to have an approved leave and would have to have that leave accrued for them to be able to go out. So that requires that they're working, that they're showing up. And again, we handle each case by case. When you're talking about things that are covered under FMLA, when you're talking about paternity leaves and things of that nature, those are, and Neil, please throw something at me or correct me if I'm wrong, but there are requirements that have to be met for someone to even access them. So, and those require time in the system. So again, there's myriad scenarios of what if, what could, what happens. But I do applaud our Insurance Committee. They have been doing their due diligence. They have been asking really hard questions and pushing us to try to find really creative solutions. So one of the things we'll be talking about is that manual. And how do we need to update it? And what are the proposals that we will be bringing back to ensure that we're as crystal clear as we possibly can be not being able to account for the myriad what-ifs?
Thank you.
I was waiting to mute you, because that was a bad action.
That's what you would, okay. Thanks, Trustee.
I do think it's important to be clear about that, you know? So people will do what people will do. But I want to be really careful that we're not creating barriers or sending a message to people that may have pre-existing medical conditions. I am someone, you know, who had been diagnosed with cancer. I am not leaving my employer. But, you know, the ability to change and to have that, I believe healthcare is a right, and that is something that we really need to convey. So I don't want anybody thinking that, you know, they have to have a certain healthcare threshold to meet in order to come here because honestly, things happen. Trustee Woodley just told us a story from this past weekend that underscores that. So I do want to make sure that, at least I'm on the record, that healthcare is a right. And something else touched me very much in this presentation and in the materials that trustees receive healthcare for those who want it on the very first day that they serve. And that is not something that is enacted across the district. And I absolutely believe that there should be parity in that area.
Absolutely.
So let's take any other clarifying questions, and then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the dais. then we'll come back to the dais. Okay, seeing no more clarifying questions, we'll go to public comment.
Pablo Navaduran.
Hi, Mr. Navaduran, welcome.
Welcome. So, yes, so you never, never know the, the Facebook. When I saw that, when, when he was a teacher, a young high school teacher who was hired like a couple days ago, or not a couple months ago, who has a surgery that need to repay the tenant of thousands of dollars, fee, a ten dollar per surgery that he had to pay, because, because he cannot get the health insurance get covered because of a 90-day period and the policy is to get live, and he had, and he, he had to pay out of pocket. And as a, as a GoFundMe, had to donate to pay his surgery, because he cannot afford to pay surgery. And, and we do, and this policy, if it's passed or passed, he doesn't have to face any financial burden. And hopefully, that one, if this one is a reason why the teacher are leaving because of a, we have a 90-day wait period. And we know many teachers have major health problems, cannot rely on wait period, cannot like wait, like get tired. It's about to leave within 90 days. And we know, we know, we need a teacher, we need to have more benefit for them. We, we need to take care of them. We know the healthcare is, is a right, not a privilege. So, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
Kaylin Evans.
Hi, Mr. Evans.
I apologize. Hi, Kaylin Evans, President of the Washoe Education Association. I just wanted to be on the record, you know, one of, this fight for benefits on day one has been something the Association has been pushing for, for years and years, far before I ever came into the position. And it, and it was one of the first conversations that myself and Dr. Enfield had around benefits. And for years, we've always been told, you know, we just can't afford it, we just can't afford it. But then we've also seen other things get prioritized. And ultimately, the, where you put your money is where your priorities are. And so it was so encouraging that when we've had that discussion, it wasn't a battle, it was immediately like, yes, we need to figure out how to get this done. So thank you, Dr. Enfield, thank you for you that are, you know, to make this possible, for being able to implement this. It's, it's a huge step forward. And again, you know, we're always going to be limited on the resources that we have as a school district. That's just the beauty of being in the public sector. So we have to be very thoughtful as to where we put our money. And what we are showing to our staff is that their health and their well-being and the well-being of their families are first and foremost the priority. And as an employee, that makes me feel wanted and welcomed and appreciated in my district. And so thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans.
That's all I have.
All right, Trustee Mayberry.
I'm ready to make a motion, if I can do that. Just a real quick comment, though, I want to thank the crazy superintendent. And please keep, please keep the crazy ideas coming. And, and thank you, Dr. Mason, Laura. As soon as you sat down, I was going to make the motion, but I knew you had a presentation to give, so thank you for your due diligence. But I really, this is an exciting time for us. I hope my colleagues will, will join me in, in supporting this. And I, you know, it's, we have to lift up our staff. I mean, when we talk about compensation and benefits, this is, this is where we begin, and I hope we can continue to go down this path. This is really a defining moment, an exciting time, a game changer. I, I can't wait to see what's going to come in the next few weeks. So with that, we'll say, I'll move the Board of Trustees, approve the change to the employee benefit eligibility waiting period from 90 days to zero days, beginning July 1st, 2023, for an approximate annual total of $1 million, as recommended by the Group Insurance Committee.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Mayberry, seconded by Vice President Nicolette. Is there any discussion on the motion? Trustee Church?
I do. I'm really torn on this, because it's a lot of money. However, I'm big on recruiting, and this is an excellent recruiting tool. I mentioned a few minor concerns about the possibility of some fraud, but, but overall, it's a great recruiting tool. The only other thing that, that kind of gets me, having been involved in the private sector for many, or public sector for many years and in negotiation, is I wonder why this isn't handled as part of our NRS 288 process of negotiation with each bargaining unit, as opposed to being handled cart launch. So those are my concerns. Having expressed those, I'm leaning strongly towards a yes, but it's a difficult decision.
Well, let's see how that leaning tower of peas that teets, because we're going to go for a vote, unless there's any other comments on the motion.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, I do have a comment. I think that today, thank you, Doctor, thank you, Ms. Thurston. This is indicative of our new superintendent. From day one, she identified her priorities, and one of which was taking care of our staff. We all know the difficulties and the hard jobs that Washoe County School District employees have. And to take all these different steps that I've been seeing, I'm proud to be a part of it, but the last several months, we've been doing all these things and great things, and improving the quality of life and, and the benefits. This is just a testament, this is just one example of many things that are yet to come still. So I just want to thank you, Dr. Enfield, and I'm ready to vote.
I just got to say thanks. Thank you to, let's echo Trustee Mayberry and Trustee Woodley and our crazy superintendent. So I'm very thankful, and I think this is, we're investing in people, so this is a very easy vote for me. There's, there's no enough fuss about it. So thank you again for everyone's work.
All right, let's get to this important opportunity for us. All those in favor of the motion as made by Trustee Mayberry and seconded by Vice President Nicolette, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Laura.
All right, we're going to take a brief pause before we go back in time to our earlier item. It is 4:05, so let's take a five-minute break, and then we will reconvene at around 4:10. Thank you. 3.03. This is a continuation of our Quality of Education series, and today, we have a discussion and presentation, a school spotlight to highlight the success of students attending Desert Heights Elementary School. This is for presentation and discussion only, and we welcome Dr. Troy Park, our Chief Academic Officer, Associate Chief Dawn Agnati, and David Friedman, the Principal of Desert Heights Elementary School. Welcome.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Enfield, and members of the board. We appreciate you pushing us back a little bit so our students could finish their school day and then come here when they could. So, and Dawn Agnati, Associate Chief of Teaching and Leadership over Area 5. As you're aware, the purpose of this item is to highlight and celebrate our amazing educators and spotlight the excellent work that is occurring in our schools. I've had the honor of supervising Desert Heights Elementary School since being named an Associate Chief back in January, and today, I have the great pleasure of introducing Desert Heights Elementary School and Principal David Friedman, who along with members of his school community will share with you some of the great things that are happening out at Desert Heights Elementary School. Thank you.
Welcome.
Sit down. Hello. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Superintendent Enfield, President Smith, Board of Trustees, it is a pleasure to be here. My name is David Friedman. I am the very proud principal of Desert Heights Elementary School, probably the best-kept secret in the North Valleys area. If you haven't visited us, I've been the principal there for the past three years, and finishing up my 12th year as principal in the state of Nevada. There is, we have a lot to kind of go over. I could probably talk about, for two hours, about our focus on teacher instruction and student learning, but we know we don't have that. But I have invited many of our stakeholders to talk about some of the great things that are going on. So, in, to begin, let's see. So we want to first start and highlight one of our superstar students, Brittany Zarocco. Brittany is, well, that is not right, but she's a fifth-grade student, not a fourth-grade student. Did you get left back? All right, I just want to make sure. She is a fifth-grade student at Desert Heights, and she was chosen because she really exemplifies our core values of being respectful, being accountable for her actions, being successful at our school, and being a leader. So one of the quotes that she told us, I said, tell us something about our school. So she said, Desert Heights is a school where magic happens. So I'm going to let her talk a little bit, and then we'll go from there.
Again, Desert Heights is a place where magic happens. The school is a safe place, and if you have a big, serious problem, there's a trusted adult that you know you can go to. We are encouraged to go to school and have fun with friends. You also have classes that challenge you to use your brain. The staff here are great. The teachers are amazing, and they teach us well. They don't let a lot of things slide. When we have problems, they try to deal with things as soon as possible. You can be yourself here and don't feel discriminated against because of who you are. If you take the chance to learn, you can see all the good things about the school. All kids get a chance to eat, and no kids are going hungry. You get a chance to be active with sports, and I'm so grateful for the experiences at Desert Heights. I am also going to miss the friendships that I have made. And most importantly, could you please get rid of SBA testing?
I like the way you think, Brittany, I really do.
Well, unfortunately, SBA testing is not our decision, Brittany. If it were, we'd be talking, but it's the federal decision. But, but we'll keep pushing to see if we can make that change. Congratulations on being named our WCSD Student Superstar for the month of May. And so we have a certificate that we'll present to you and, and do a photo with all of the trustees, and it says, "In recognition for your outstanding contribution to your school and our community, we honor you as a WCSD Student Superstar." And I always say, we have over 61,000 students in this district. There's one Student Superstar for the month of May, and that is you, Brittany. So we are incredibly proud of you. Keep being awesome. And middle school will be great, you'll have friends there too. But I'm so glad that you have found such a home at Desert Heights. We're very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Now, we'd love to get up and take a picture with you and your family. We're going to hang tight for one moment, because there is, but wait, there's more, Brittany, and the superintendent has something for you, so that she's grabbing that right now. We're so proud of you. You did a wonderful job talking with us. There's lots of adults that get up here in front of that microphone, but you handled that like a champ. I know, I know. What does a signed hall pass from a trustee get, gets you at Desert Heights? So for those watching at home, Superintendent Enfield is giving Brittany the pin that goes along with being the Student Superstar for the month. All right, thank you, Principal Friedman, let's continue.
Perfect. So our core values at our school and what we reinforce behavior on are, we're the coyotes, so we call it our hal. But we really focus on having respect, owning your actions and choices, working to succeed, and learning by leading. Here's a little bit about our school. So we are almost 50% Hispanic Latino, with the next two large demographics of being white and Pacific Islander. We have a great population of students from the Marshall Islands at our school, so a very diverse school. One of the things notable is that we have almost
day and then come here when they could. And Dawn Agnati, Associate Chief of Teaching and Leadership over Area 5. As you're aware, the purpose of this item is to highlight and celebrate our amazing educators and spotlight the excellent work that is occurring in our schools. I've had the honor of supervising Desert Heights Elementary School since being named an Associate Chief back in January. And today, I have the great pleasure of introducing Desert Heights Elementary School and Principal David Friedman, who along with members of his school community will share with you some of the great things that are happening out at Desert Heights Elementary School. Thank you.
Welcome.
Sit down. Hello.
Hello.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Superintendent Enfield, President Smith, Board of Trustees, it is a pleasure to be here. My name is David Friedman. I am the very proud Principal of Desert Heights Elementary School, probably the best-kept secret in the North Valleys area. If you haven't visited us, I've been the Principal there for the past three years and finishing up my 12th year as Principal in the state of Nevada. There is, we have a lot to kind of go over. I could probably talk about for two hours about our focus on teacher instruction and student learning, but we know we don't have that. But I have invited many of our stakeholders to talk about some of the great things that are going on. So, to begin, let's see. So, we want to first start and highlight one of our superstar students, Brittany Zarocco. Brittany is, well, that is not right, but she's a fifth-grade student, not a fourth-grade student. Did you get left back? All right, I just want to make sure. She is a fifth-grade student at Desert Heights, and she was chosen because she really exemplifies our core values of being respectful, being accountable for her actions, being successful at our school, and being a leader. One of the quotes that she told us, I said, "Tell us something about our school." So, she said, "Desert Heights is a school where magic happens." So, I'm going to let her talk a little bit, and then we'll go from there.
Again, Desert Heights is a place where magic happens. The school is a safe place, and if you have a big, serious problem, there's a trusted adult that you know you can go to. We are encouraged to go to school and have fun with friends. You also have classes that challenge you to use your brain. The staff here are great. The teachers are amazing, and they teach us well. They don't let a lot of things slide. When we have problems, they try to deal with things as soon as possible. You can be yourself here and don't feel discriminated against because of who you are. If you take the chance to learn, you can see all the good things about the school. All kids get a chance to eat, and no kids are going hungry. You get a chance to be active with sports, and I'm so grateful for the experiences at Desert Heights. I am also going to miss the friendships that I have made. And most importantly, could you please get rid of SBA testing?
I like the way you think, Brittany, I really do.
Well, unfortunately, SBA testing is not our decision, Brittany. If it were, we'd be talking, but it's the federal decision. But we'll keep pushing to see if we can make that change. Congratulations on being named our WCSD Student Superstar for the month of May. And so, we have a certificate that we'll present to you and do a photo with all of the trustees, and it says, "In recognition for your outstanding contribution to your school and our community, we honor you as a WCSD Student Superstar." And I always say, we have over 61,000 students in this district. There's one Student Superstar for the month of May, and that is you, Brittany. So, we are incredibly proud of you. Keep being awesome. And middle school will be great. You'll have friends there, too. But I'm so glad that you have found such a home at Desert Heights. We're very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Now, we'd love to get up and take a picture with you and your family. We're going to hang tight for one moment because there is, but wait, there's more, Brittany. And the superintendent has something for you, so that she's grabbing that right now. We're so proud of you. You did a wonderful job talking with us. There's lots of adults that get up here in front of that microphone, but you handled that like a champ. I know, I know. What does a signed hall pass from a trustee get you at Desert Heights? So, for those watching at home, Superintendent Enfield is giving Brittany the pin that goes along with being the Student Superstar for the month. All right. Thank you, Principal Friedman. Let's continue.
Perfect. So, our core values at our school and what we reinforce behavior on are, we're the Coyotes, so we call it our "hall," but we really focus on having respect, owning your actions and choices, working to succeed, and learning by leading. Here's a little bit about our school. So, we are almost 50% Hispanic-Latino with the next two large demographics of being white and Pacific Islander. We have a great population of students from the Marshall Islands at our school, so a very diverse school. One of the things notable is that we have almost 30% students with disabilities at Desert Heights. So, inclusion and supporting families who have students with IEPs is huge for us. Nationally, it should be around 13%. So, it's a very large population, so we always plan with our students with disabilities in mind. Excuse me. And then also, we're about 20% EL students. So, we are an amazing school full of very diverse students and with a very big focus on inclusive practices and universal design of learning. I do have a parent that I would like to come up, so we have Jen Shoret, and I'm going to have her talk a little bit about her experience at Desert Heights.
Welcome.
And her son Kai, who is in kindergarten, almost a first grader.
Hi, Kai. Welcome, Kai, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I would like to talk about Desert Heights from the perspective as a parent of a child with special needs. There are three, when I was asked to talk about this, there are three main parts that came to mind, which is Ms. Sax, Kai's kindergarten teacher, and Mr. Friedman, and the special education program that are all very big parts in how my child is doing in school. Ms. Sax is amazing. She communicates daily. In the beginning, we were delayed, and she has constantly given me updates on how to help improve at home, improvements at school. The communication is exceptional. I get those little texts in the day of things that he has done that were milestones that we were worried we may not hit this year, and it is everything as a parent to see those. Mr. Friedman is also excellent. We appreciate his willingness and openness to talk to us. He is all around the campus, which, as a parent, he knows all the students and parents by name, and that's huge. I mean, we can go to him. We felt like the first couple of weeks we knew him and could have a relationship with him that would help our child all the way through elementary school. When it comes to the special education services that we receive at Desert Heights, they've gone above and beyond. There's never been a question as to what is best for Kai's needs. They have always been inclusive and willing to add services. They've listened to us as the parents and really taken into consideration what our concerns were, any milestones that we were really wanting to work on and reach. And overall, this first year has been an excellent experience at Desert Heights. We are looking forward to more years there as Kai grows, and we are excited to continue on with the Special Education Department, Mr. Friedman, hopefully Ms. Sax. She's teaching first grade next year, so we're really hoping that we get her again. But overall, it's been a wonderful experience. I can't say enough great things about them and the inclusive environment where we just feel part of their family. The watchdog program that Mr. Friedman has started is great. Our son's been able to have a male role model that is a great family friend come and spend time at the school, and it's just, it's been a wonderful experience. And so, we're really thrilled to be here today to talk about all the great things that they've done and how they've made us feel part of their family. So, thank you for letting us share.
Thank you so much. And hi, Kai.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to say anything? No.
You love Desert Heights?
Yes, we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. So, quickly, we want to just go over some data that we have. One of the things that we've been focusing on is the science of reading, really, the litany of research of how students learn to read. Last year, we were, or this year, we were recognized through our SBA scores of, at least in ELA, of getting back to pre-pandemic levels. In third grade, we were 2% above; fourth grade, we were 3% above pre-pandemic; and sixth grade, 7%. So, that was, you know, the great work of our teachers who really focused on academic achievement. In math, we did not, we were just short of pre-pandemic, but third grade was 4% above pre-pandemic, and fifth grade was 7% above pre-pandemic. So, we definitely have had some, you know, celebrations, and also, we know there's still a ton of work to do with our students, so. One of the things we're extremely proud of, prior to me getting to Desert Heights, there were about 88 major discipline events at the school, which included bullying, harassment, major physical aggression. We really took to positive behavior intervention and supports, and within the first year, we dropped it down to, I think it was about 24, then to 16, and we're right about that. It will probably be a little bit more than last year, but really focusing on teaching students' expectations, modeling those expectations, and reinforcing them has really been a strategy that has worked for all of our students. So, we're seeing a lot less behavior at our school and a lot more learning going on. So, things that we're proud of, at this point, I'm going to have two of our teachers come up, and they really cover most of these things, so I'm going to have Ms. Bab talk about and Ms. Sax talk about some of these things. So, come on up. I'll sit over here.
Welcome, Ms. Bab and Ms. Sax. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Maggie Bab. I teach second grade at Desert Heights. I have spent my entire career, eight years now, working at Desert Heights. I love the community, the students, and the camaraderie at the school, and I am immensely proud of the work and progress that I've seen our school make, and it's a great honor to be able to be here today to share the wonderful work and success that our school has seen. As a school, we continuously strive towards improving our teaching practices. So, this year, as David was saying, we participated in a school-wide deep dive and discussion around the science of reading. We listened to, as a staff, we listened to the podcast, "Sold a Story," and discussed each episode together. This was a really meaningful experience that I know as we continue to weigh our own current practices against the current research will only lead to increased outcomes in reading for our students. In addition, we've also had many teachers participate in a book club exploring the shifts toward the science of reading, and we have worked towards a culture of constant improvement beyond our required professional development credit hours. Like Mr. Friedman was saying, our school serves a diverse population of students' needs, and for the past few years, ever since Mr. Friedman came to our school, we've had a really heavy focus on including all students in classrooms and with their peers of the same age. We strive to have students included in all activities, classrooms, specials, lunches, and academics throughout the day. This has been a really mutually beneficial experience for all involved. I know personally, fostering and embracing this environment has made me a better teacher, and it has pushed our students to really embrace their own compassion and empathy. It has been just like the most amazing thing to see the way our students show kindness towards each other and how eager they are to always help one another out. Desert Heights strives to include all families in our community and the school. This year, we have had many family engagement events and activities. We had a wonderful open house experience in the fall where families could not only learn about the curriculum their students engage in, but we actually gave them a chance to experience it firsthand. We hosted a fall festival, art night, STEM night, music concerts, and academic nights, and all of these have been really well-attended. Like I said, I've been at this school for eight years, and in my whole time at Desert Heights, I've never seen just such a present and excited family community. Of course, one of the most amazing things about being at this school for so long is getting to see former students come back, even some of my own first-year students who are now in high school, come back to visit our school. To brag further, one of our most recent events, our multicultural night, the cafeteria was standing room only because of the number of families that attended. So, we have definitely been able to reach out to all families in one way or another throughout this school year. I am incredibly proud to be a member of the Desert Heights Coyote Community and really appreciate you taking the time to hear from us today.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Joanna Sax, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Desert Heights Elementary and will be a first-grade teacher at Desert Heights Elementary next year. Something that Desert Heights strives to create is a school-wide community. This community encompasses our staff, families, and most importantly, our students. We have created a student-centered, academically-rich environment in which students and families feel safe and included. It is my pleasure to be here today and share with you some of the incredible attributes our school has and the significant impact our staff and students are sharing with our community. Our school has taken intentional actions towards creating a student-centered environment. One way in which we have done this is to adopt KIG and cooperative learning strategies within our classroom. We've had extensive training as staff on how to implement these strategies successfully, and I've seen so much growth in the students in my classroom because of it. These strategies focus on equal participation, active listening, and respect among peers. Students are leading and participating in classroom conversations in which they each have a voice, and students aren't only expected to contribute to the conversation, but also to listen to one another. By creating school-wide, clear and explicit expectations about what students are doing, how they are doing it, and why, students feel safer and more comfortable participating in these conversations. One of my favorite moments as a teacher is when one of my students has that aha moment where the bright light goes on in their brain. This moment is that much sweeter when another student has helped them get to that point. At Desert Heights, we are giving students the tools they need to be successful in their lives. These tools include respecting others and their thoughts, participating, cooperative conversations, and taking ownership and pride of the work that they have completed. Students are happy to come to school not only because they want to learn, but because they know they have a whole team behind them, staff, students, and families rooting for their successes and willing to help them achieve their goals. I asked my students, who are five, the best thing about Desert Heights, and the overall answer that they gave me was that they love our school because our school loves them. I am a proud member of the Desert Heights community, and I thank you for allowing me time to speak with you today.
Thank you both so much.
So, as you can see, we focused a lot on instruction, on KIG instructors, which has really made the classroom more of an engaging space. One of the things we're very proud of also, we were recognized as a gold-level school for MTSS for our behavior. And then, we also brought on watchdogs, dads of great students, which is through the National Center of Fathering. It's, the goal is to bring positive male role models to the school, so uncles and grandfathers and dads, and really, we want them to see what a full day looks like. So, I do have one of our, one of our watchdogs who is at our school every week, helping and supporting. He's been in every classroom, but typically, we have three to five dads or positive male role models at our school. So, I'm going to have Bob Tilton come up and just talk about his experience being a watchdog.
Hi, Bob, welcome.
Here's a copy of my daily routine. Thank you for allowing me to come talk about the program real quick. I'm a, I'm a grandpa of a first grader, and Desert Heights is our second school in your district. With all the things going on across the country, I was very impressed with the school. Mr. Friedman is remarkable. He knows every child's name, greets them every morning. The adult comes in, he greets them with their name. The gates are locked immediately afterwards, and the school's locked down. I'm part of that program. He had a pizza gathering of fathers and parents one evening and asked for volunteers to come help with the watchdog program. And I'm a retired medical professional, kind of bored. I've worked hard all my life, and now I'm sitting around doing very little except raising two young children, and I decided I want to get involved. I was very concerned because the last school I went to was like open. Anybody could come in and out, and I was very concerned. So, the watchdog program, that's our job. We patrol the halls, check all the doors, attend the classes, act as a role model, monitor the school grounds, intervene whenever there's issues. We're not trained to do that, so we go get a teacher to come settle the disputes and the bullying and anything that might happen. I actually, on my first week, found a couple of doors that were open, reported to maintenance. He said, "No way, I checked those doors." So, about a week later, I came back. He says, "You know, you were right. During the summer, they get really hot, and the locks get stuck, so I got them fixed immediately, and thank you for letting me know." So, just little things like that. Couple individuals in hoods were wandering outside the fence. I went in the office, reported it. They immediately let me know that it was the groundskeepers on the outside of the fence. They just didn't look like groundskeepers to me. And so, we're very vigilant, and it's a good program, and I'm real proud to be part of it. And I'm a retired military guy. I'm a combat vet out of Vietnam, so I always figure I'm prepared, but then I turned 77 this last year, and I thought, "What am I going to do if there's somebody real big coming here?" And so, he told me what to do. He's got the red buzzer, and we lock it down, and everybody is in a safe place. So, I feel he's done a horrendous job compared to what I've seen in other schools.
Tremendous.
Of making our children safe. Anyway, I could talk about him all day. He does something that I find almost impossible. How does he remember everybody's name, you know? And it's a real skill. I came a little bit early today. I know you saw me sitting over here. I'm also a tribal elder at the Pyramid Lake Indian Tribe, and I saw on your agenda the culture and language issue. There is a tremendous mistrust with the school issue, and if you ever would like some info on the history and why the elders and our younger people have a problem with the language in school, is we were taken, in my group, were taken off our reservation, put into the government schools. I'm off the Pyramid Lake Indian, and the Washington County School District would not allow us in public schools. We had to go to the government school. We were not allowed to speak our language, and as a result, I don't speak Paiute. I am a new move to Kwatzu. I'm the leader of the Veterans Warriors Group. And so, my son, I tried to get him involved in learning the language, and he said, "No, I'd speak that language in school, I'll get beat up." So, there's been this transition, and now there's a government move and a tribal move to try to save our language and our culture. So, that's what they're talking about. But the elders and some of the people out there think it's all about, well, they're getting money, that's why they're doing. So, there's a lot of this stuff I could talk about forever, but if you ever want help with that, I'd be glad to help.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And then, just finally, I would like to end with, obviously, there's many areas to focus on, and we're always striving to get better. Our goal is to increase academic achievement in both reading and math, and we know reading is a skill that leverages into every area. Implement engagement strategy, active engagement, and English language learner strategies. Address chronic absenteeism, that has been a huge issue for us this year. We always say that we could show a year's growth in a year's time if we have students at school, so we've been really brainstorming different ways to get our students that are chronically absent to school. Continue engaging our families and then providing feedback to teachers on teaching and learning. And we've adopted a protocol called Trust-Based Observations, which allows us to give feedback to teachers about their teaching practice, so. And that is Desert Heights Elementary School. We thank you for letting us.
Absolutely fantastic. Oh, don't run away so fast. Don't, don't you run away so fast because I'm so very impressed with this. And actually, the topic of dad's groups came up not too long ago, and I was actually just telling trustee Guss like that we do have schools that have programs like yours, and then low and behold, it happened to be that you were coming today. So, thank you so much for sharing. So thank you so much for showing and modeling what strong male figures can do for a school and how that can really support the culture of a school as well, too. I think that this is incredible work, and so is your return to pre-pandemic testing levels as well, too. I know that that's a lot of hard work from your teachers and you as a staff. Are there any questions for Principal Friedman, Dr. Enfield?
Well, it's not really a question. First of all, if you're not following Desert Heights on social media, they do a great job of spreading the magic that Brittany talked about publicly, and I wanna thank them for doing that. I think it's safe to say, every child deserves a Miss Bab or a Miss Sacks in their life, so thank you for being here. And Principal Friedman, really appreciate your leadership and the very intentional culture that you're building at your school that clearly is really permeating. I will share, I visited recently, and it was a bit of a humbling experience, because as I was there greeting the little ones as they were coming in from outside, and Mr. Friedman was standing there, one of the little girls said, "Mr. Friedman, is that your mom?" And I wasn't sick that day, so I mean, clearly the job is aging me, but it is a joyful place to visit. We are grateful for your work, and thank you again for being here, everybody, and to Brittany, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, Principal Friedman. We appreciate you being here. And to our student superstar, congratulations. All right, so that closes out item 3.03, and also that completes all of our third section for today's meeting. And now we will move on to Section 4. These are our reports, and we are thrilled to have our student representative with us today. So Ivy, will you please lead us off? And as a reminder, you are not held to the three minutes, so you go for it.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much for that introduction. I'm really happy to be here and doing my student representative report, especially is my second-to-last one. But I wanted to inform you guys that this past Friday, we had our Strength in Voices Conference. So we had almost every single middle and high school and elementary school represented, and we had students from each school come, and they got to have a full day of learning different ways to use their voices at schools and really trying to empower them to all go back to their own schools, start their own student voice projects. Many of them had already been completing their own student voice projects. We had one elementary cheer group who had, so it was really the highlight of my day, and I had their entire song stuck in my head for the entire weekend. But they wanted to start a cheer group to really boost morale and spirit at their school, and so they started one. And so, there was another elementary school group that had started these watering plants. They each had their own plants in their class, and they wanted to see if they could increase attendance at their school by students watering the plants and having to show up for the plants. Yeah, they were pet plants, and so they had, it was their responsibility to go to school every day to water the plant, which I thought was so smart. And then, we had many different, a big thank you to Jill Lawrence and Dr. Laura Davidson and everybody else who helped with coordinating the entire Strength in Voices Conference. We had been waiting for a solid, I had never actually been to one, and that's been Student Voice's like main thing for all these years, and we haven't been able to have one since 2019. And so it was really great that we all got to be here. I wanna thank all of you that could make it, Trustee Westlake and Trustee Mayberry and Trustee Nicolette and Dr. Enfield, all of you for coming, because it was very fun to have you guys there. I know the students enjoy seeing all of you, and I know, looking at the looks on your faces, you guys enjoy seeing the students as well. And then I'm sure a lot of you got to see our very cool breakout sessions and all how students got to, from their own individual schools, they put together many sessions to really educate students on certain topics that were going on in the district. So we had different topics around attendance, and then we had, my group had done one on equity and equality and how to provide equitable resources for all students in our schools. And so it was just a really fun day to see all the different students come together and really get empowered and go back to their schools and hopefully be able to start something, and especially start councils through all their individual schools, because that's our end goal, is to have as many councils as we can, hopefully in all schools, and then be able to meet with students on a monthly basis and have very, just a cohesive student voice unit with our district. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ivy. All right, that closes item 4.01, and now we'll move on to board reports. I'm gonna get a little creative, and I'm gonna start with Clerk Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a busy couple weeks. I don't know really where to start. I'll start with the K-12. The K-12 Foundation Partnership with EDON, I got to attend that lunch. A lot of you guys were there, and Ivy was there as well. And I'm just gonna say, as a proud GRGC dad, Espechafurts High School, they presented colors and won like first place in state, I believe, for drills, so just gonna say. Did a book depository visit, did that with Trustee Westlake. We also had a town hall with Trustee Mayberry. Nice, interesting engagement. Had some good hearty discussion there, and hopefully clarified some of the misinformation that might be going out there, but a lot of good information, a lot of things were taken in. My wife and I also attended the WA War Dinner Banquet. I wanna thank President Caitlin for inviting us. First time I got to wear my Tictado t-shirt in a while, so that's kinda cool. Yes, there's photos. And Trustee Mayberry was there for that one as well. Met with Sparks Mayor Lawson, kinda got the feel for the future vision of Sparks, and got to see a little bit what our role will play in that. So as we look at, you know, our capital improvements and stuff like that, I know that we're behind the scenes, there's discussions going on about that. I got to attend Natchez Elementary School, that was awesome. I always loved visiting the Native American community, so that was good. Got to testify with Trustee Mayberry, sent me Bill 285. Obviously, our former president, Angelie Taylor, was spearheading that, so it was good to see her as well. And had fun. Also got to advocate for, you know, the Time for 20 event. I was there at the legislation, or at the legislature Capitol Building, although I guess now it's Time for 22, so. All in all, busy week, really nice, got to be out there in the community, and it was good.
Thank you. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. It has been a very busy couple of weeks, but very informative, very exciting, a lot of fun. I attended the Silver Strings Orchestra at Mendive Middle School. They are so talented, and I had a video, but I couldn't get it to send, but amazing talent in these kids. I also went to the Student Voice at TMCC. What a wonderful, wonderful event that was. I was exhausted afterwards, though. Even so, I would actually wanna do that once a month. It's so much fun, and these kids are amazing. I was in the superhero room when we broke out, and that was awesome. Read JROTC Awards was held the past couple weeks. Again, amazing young people. Attended the Educator Appreciation on May 11th. I love supporting our teachers. Attended the Safety Forum at Trainer, the Facility Modernization Plan at Sparks Middle School. A lot of great things coming out. I just, I appreciate the communication so much that we're having. The K-12 Foundation Lunch, partnering with businesses in our community. I think these are wonderful opportunities for us. We did the Town Hall at Sepulveda with Trustee Mayberry and Trustee Rodriguez. I think it was good for a start. I do think it was good for a start. I'm actually doing one myself this Thursday at Reno Town Mall, starting at 5 o'clock. I wanna keep the communication going. I know we'll get there if we keep on opening up dialogue. The Paiute Language Bowl was just an amazing experience, and yes, we have been very remiss, but I think we're getting it, and hopefully we're just gonna continue it with more schools involved. It's amazing to hear that language and the history behind that language. I read again at Sun Valley Elementary School, and I will be performing a Sunny the Lion on Friday. I am stepping in to the role as the new actor, and I intend to bring a whole new spin on this performance and bring it up to the next level. No offense, Adam, I know you tried. Moms on the Run was very, very successful. It was held at HUG this year, and just an amazing event to support breast cancer. I also attended the art auction at Mendive and the book repository, which is very, very interesting, and I just love books.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Trustee Westlake. Trustee Church.
Thank you very much. Yes, very, very busy a few weeks. I'm actually gonna waive my time. I'm gonna speak a public comment on some very generic issues like I've done before, so that's all I have to say for now.
Wonderful. Moving on to Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. So unfortunately, last week I was out of commission. I wasn't feeling that well. But prior to that, I was able to, the prior week, to do some site visits. The first one we have here, it was, I actually visited a charter school in the vicinity of Glenn Duncan Elementary School. This is, this school's within a mile away. I wasn't sure what to expect visiting a charter school. I know that there's some thoughts out there of us being in conflict with charter schools, but when I went through those doors, all I saw were our kids from our district, and I was really impressed. Principal Gia Maricini, she's actually a school district employee. She was with the school district for several decades, and she's a principal now there, and she was amazing, and all her employees were amazing, and the diversity in their school was beautiful. And I couldn't tell who was more enthusiastic, whether it was her or one of my favorite people, Ryan Smith, principal of Glenn Duncan. So he's got a challenger in his vicinity, but it was a beautiful experience. They're doing wonderful things there, and I had a great time, and I appreciate that they invited me, and I look forward to us having more collaborations with charter schools. And then I also did visit Elmcrest Elementary, and here we have second grade teacher Jessica Blasi. She was the benefit of a raffle. She applied for a raffle in our Teachers Appreciation Week, and she was a winner, and her classroom was wonderful, was lovely, all her students, they really, you could tell that they had deep appreciation and respect for her. They were very happy that she won the raffle. That was a great experience. Ms. Wilson, the principal, she's dealing with some challenges there. Unfortunately, like some of our other principals next year, a lack of extra funding, so she's gonna be dealing with some resources issues there. Hopefully, the things that we've been doing and working for are gonna help principals like her. So that was a good experience. And then lastly, we did have the Safety Forum at Pine Middle School. I attended that. Pretty much all of us were there, almost, and that was very interesting, a lot of good information. I was very proud to see the Washoe County School District staff that were there, very knowledgeable, very helpful, very responsive, very diplomatic. I really liked how they managed the crowds. And I also attended the online version, so I anticipated that it would be the same, complete different information. It did not, it wasn't cookie cutter, so I appreciate that, and that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't be redundant, as I attended some of the same events that my colleagues have, but I did have an opportunity to attend the Read ROTC ceremony a few weeks ago, and I think when we met before, that was Teacher Appreciation Week, so the latter part of the week, I also participated in some Educator Appreciation events, including one at Marvin Piccolo, where there was a teacher there that I honored with a gift card. I think she'd been there for 37 years. She is skilled in music therapy, and forgive me, I'm not as prepared as I should be, but visiting Marvin Piccolo, which is not in my district, by the way, but I appreciate the opportunity, was a wonderful experience for me. Also had a time with the Facility Modernization Plan, presentation at Sparks Middle Schools, very well done, very good discussion, lots of stability, which I really appreciated. Also, spent some time at Marvin Moss Elementary, honored a teacher, Ms. Hadley, actually she was a librarian, has been there for 37 years as well. Grateful to have the opportunity to tour the company, Ivy, at the Student Voice Showcase on Friday. Again, I'm looking at a lot of things that I, you know, I've already been noted that I was at, so I'll keep it short. Yeah, it's been a busy week, and I think there's more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the beauty of the redundancy is that as seven trustees, we are out in our community, making connections, making friends, helping to be informed and inform, and I think it's, I'm very proud of the work that we do in our community. And I, too, will not be redundant. I recently participated in the Stead Elementary School Reading Week, and oh my gosh, they had me running around crazy. 15 minutes, it was absolutely fabulous. And as a former teacher, I tend to like get into the content of the book, and so I ask questions and participate, and gets to the point where, okay, hey, you gotta move on now, but it was absolutely wonderful. I will be a little redundant in the Student Voice. Something wonderful happened. Principal Jay Salter led a team of students, and the topic was our power to save our schools. And it was really well done. Each student, Galena High School student, had come up with a project that they wanted to initiate, and it would be a class that students could take. And it was, the ideas were just endless, and they were wonderful. I attended the Clower Family Foundation Human Trafficking Awareness Partnership Event this last weekend, and our own police officer, Eric Diamond, is part of that heat team. And I learned a lot, tough information about human trafficking and the challenges that we are having in our schools, and how we really do need to beef up our work in partnerships in this community. And I wanna thank our police department for being active participants in that, and we can continue our work, and if there's anything the trustees can do, please let us know, because this is important. On that note, to Ivy's Student Voice and having it in every school, if there's anything that the trustees, I'm gonna speak for us, that we can do to help make that happen, because we all embrace the importance of student voice. You are the experts, and if we can help make that happen, please let us know. I also attended at Pine Middle School Google Online Safety Roadshow, Be Internet Aware. I wanna thank Josh Reddick for making that happen. It's a program that is directed specifically for students about internet and online safety, and it's on my list to do more of that. We have got to do more of that for not only our students, our employees, but our families. So thank you. I'm having a good time, living the dream.
Thank you so much. Before we start my time, I do wanna make sure that everyone knows, I absolutely appreciate. If you don't wanna be redundant, you don't have to, but the work you do in the community and you showing up absolutely deserves to be heard and celebrated. So just because other colleagues were there does not mean that you can't bring it up, because it's so important for us to carry these messages and for our community members to hear where you are. So don't ever feel that you can't reiterate that you were somewhere that other people were as well, too.
May we have more time, then? Oh, never mind.
That is, that is a very good question, but no. Speaking of which, all right, JJ, let's queue up that first picture. So the first thing that I'm gonna share with you is our students from Bernice Matthews Elementary, they toured Reno City Hall, and they spoke with the council people at the council meeting. They spoke confidently. They spoke about their community, what it is that they need, and I am so proud to see these young people elevating their voice with their elected officials. So very, very proud of you, Bernice Matthews. I'd also like to recognize the district's four National Merit Scholars. These are each receiving $2,500, and that's Ella Benoy from Galena High School, Soraya Goldstein from HUG, and Violet Mulligan and Braden Myers from Reno High School. So congratulations to you. You bring a lot of honor to our district. I also participated in Educator Appreciation Week, surprising and celebrating several schools and teachers. I was at a huge event at Collin Ranch Elementary with Reno Fire, the Washoe County Sheriff's Deputy Officers. It was just absolutely wonderful. We had a wonderful time, and there was just so many gift cards and teachers to celebrate. I'd like to bring attention and formally congratulate both Incline Elementary School and High School. They have both- both Incline Elementary School and High School. They have both recently been designated STEM Schools by the Governor's Office, and that means that they have proven to demonstrate the highest standards of STEM education, and they are a model for the state. So congratulations to Incline Elementary and High School. I also spoke at length with the founders of the Incline Education Fund, and that was time very well invested in learning about that community. I also attended a meeting related to items in front of our legislature right now, and personally held several conversations with legislators in my role as an advocate for WCSD and the state and this board. So there's a lot of work that's happening in the background. I also attended and gave a speech at the Washoe K-12 Foundation Luncheon, and had the honor of introducing Dr. Enfield. And I do want to recognize Vice President Nicolet, Clerk Rodriguez, Trustee Mayberry, and Trustee Westlake for also being there to cheer us on. It was really an incredible event, to be surrounded by hundreds and hundreds of community members that know and believe in public education in our area. I also met with Dr. Alsbury regarding our upcoming board training on June 20th, so there's a lot that I do in the background in my role as the president. And then finally, I'm going to make sure that the whole community knows that there is a panel coming up, oh, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow. It's hosted by Trekkie Meadows tomorrow. The topic is Teaching in a Post-Pandemic School. It's May 31st at 4:00 PM at the Reno Public Market, and it's got quite a lineup of speakers. So I encourage everyone to come out to have this community conversation with us. Thank you. All right, and now that closes item 4.02. And now we'll go to item 4.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Smith. I will begin by noting that on Thursday, our very own President Beth Smith will be honored as a Woman of Achievement at the annual luncheon, and we look forward to celebrating you there. Congratulations on being recognized for your leadership and your contributions to the community. Vice President Nicolet, you, you mentioned the trafficking issue. I actually had a meeting with Awaken recently, and we talked about how we can more systematically get that information into our schools, and how the, how a central office, we can partner with them, so they're not having to go school to school to try to get in. How can we get a calendar going of making that happen? And we're going to kick that off in August. I, I, I joined many of you at many of these wonderful events. I will mention one that hasn't been mentioned yet, which, well, actually, maybe Clerk Rodriguez mentioned it, but Trustee Mayberry and Clerk Rodriguez and I were at the rally for, in support of funding public education in the state of Nevada on Wednesday. It was a terrific turnout. Really, really happy to be there. The sun was shining, the energy was high, and the voices were loud. So I want to thank everybody for showing up there, and especially WA's role in organizing. My first Educator Appreciation Week in Washoe County School District, wow. I know Katie Louise isn't here, and I know a lot of people helped make it happen, but she was really the driving force behind it. We do educator appreciation right here in this district. Like, it is no joke. I'm like, okay, like, next year I have to up my game. So it was wonderful. And I will close with, I don't think it should be monthly, Trustee Westlake, I'd like to have that Student Voice event every Friday. Like, that would be such a great way to end every week. I just want to thank, there were so many adults in that room, too, who were a part of making that day happen. And it was one of those, I mean, I'm proud every day to be a part of this community and serve this district, but it was one of those moments, and I even said to Dr. Mason and Dr. Keough, these are those moments where it's like, we're doing something right here. We're really doing something right here, when something like this gets pulled off. And to Ivy's point, on Friday, I will actually be going to Billinghurst to likely receive my own pet succulent plant, which I'm sure I will be held accountable to keeping alive in the coming months, so the pressure is on. But I agree with you, it was a brilliant idea on behalf of our students, and so I look forward to that. And enjoy the sunny weather, everybody, and try to stay healthy.
Thank you. I don't know if it's sunny right now. Rumor has it it was hailing somewhere a little while ago. Yeah, it was. But that was a nice wish. I'm, I'm teasing you, I'm teasing you. All right, that closes item 4.03 and Section 4 in its entirety. Now we'll move on to Section 5. These are our closing public comments, or these are our closing items, and now we welcome public comment for item 5.01. JJ?
Abigail Nergar.
Hi. Is it Ms. Nergar? Welcome.
So I'm Abigail Nergar. I'm a student at Reed High School. And I just want to say good evening. So you've probably read my email from a couple of weeks ago, saying that as of this morning, all bathrooms have been open at my school, which I'm very grateful for, but this is like, not really this change I'm satisfied with. I, among others, view this move as sort of a hastily made decision just to satisfy the parents and student body, but this does not help the admin, or nor am I satisfied with the security at the school. Simply opening the bathrooms is not a solution, because that's exactly what we had before with vandalism and vaping. The solution is cameras, with the possible integration of smoke or vape detectors to scare away any smokers by sounding an alarm. School administrators, they already have a huge responsibility to manage the school, and they should not have to play the role of hall monitor as well, especially when we have the solution of cameras. I've heard that Trustee Church has visited Reed before and suggested the possible integration of a larger camera system. So I'm assumed that he'd be the biggest advocate, even if it costs the district some money. I think it's worth the safety of our students. The lack of security at other high schools is astonishing. I've called around to all the high schools in the district, and older schools like mine are having the same issue. We need cameras for security. Having one or two in the main halls is not enough. And reports from teachers show that students are afraid to use the bathrooms. They're afraid to go relieve themselves. That's not okay. And sweeping this under the rug or pretending that it never happened is not the solution. Additionally, this would help enforce the one-point-of-entry rule that all schools should be following, and ours is not. I see students coming in from all around, not okay. And we have all summer to do necessary prayers on our home, that is Reed High, and I expect that by next year, I'll see cameras where there hasn't, where there wasn't before. It's now up to the district to provide a backbone for the education system, since it's been taken away from teachers at a local level by not mandating attendance of students. This is something my teachers, I hear them complain about all the time. To me, they're fellow, like administrators, they're teachers. It makes it really difficult for them to do their job. Once again, I'm glad the bathrooms are open, but now we need to give admin the tools to punish the naughty kids. It's, nothing's going to get fixed unless people are learning lessons. So now is the time to do the right thing and not the easy thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being with us.
Jeff Church.
Hi, Mr. Church.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jeff Church, obviously trustee. Like to, number one, what a great meeting, very civil. We had a number of votes that went different ways and different people. That just represents such a wonderful democracy. Even if I was on the losing end, it's still a very civil, wonderful meeting. And I really appreciate the student that took the time to wait. It's been three hours since we started to speak about school security. That is such an important issue, so I hope we stay on top of it. But basically, from time to time, I've come before you and presented some different agenda requests. Today, I, I cut it down to 12. I want to thank Dr. Nicolet and Trustee Westlake in the past for seconding a couple of my agenda requests. I'd love to hear yours. If you have anything that you'd like on the agenda, please reach out to me. Let's talk about it, and let's see if we can get that on there. Of the 12 that I submitted today, there's a few I want to talk about as time allows. Number one, public comment. We have public comment at the end. The student had to wait three, three hours to talk. The county commission's done the same. It's not an end all one way or another, and I don't want to speak for other trustees, but one trustee mentioned the possibility of maybe having a minute at the beginning, but three minutes at the end. Another possibility is having a time certain. Maybe we would get the important stuff out of the way that we didn't want people to have to wait around for, do a public comment, say at, at 3:30, for example. So there's a lot of options, if we think about it. People could pre-record. They could come here, go in the other room, pre-record. They don't have to wait three hours, and then you play it. Just so many different options, if we could put it on the agenda and discuss it. Police oversight. We had a wonderful presentation from the police chief at the last meeting. I'd love to see that ongoing, approximately once a month. Take 10 minutes, see what the chief or their representative can talk about, welcome new personnel, anything that, that would apply to the department. The other one I want to mention, it kind of came up today, but not completely, is it come to my attention, we have many, many boards, and they have different makeups, 7, 15, 14. And I said, well, who decides who's, how many? Who decides what the criteria? Do you have to be a parent? Do you have to have a kid in the school, if you have a kid in a charter school? And there's no definitive, I can't find anything on where they come from. Somebody decided years ago that there's going to be seven members of the Student Attendance Committee or whatever, and who did that? It's not in any policy. So that's a board function. It's a board committee. So I'd like to see us discuss that. Maybe we want to make it nine. Maybe we want to cut it down. Maybe we want to change the membership of that. But those are board responsibilities. I'd love to see discussed. And I appreciate your time. I got eight seconds left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Mike Krogen.
Hi, Mr. Krogen.
Hello, and let me begin by once again thanking you for the honor of leading the pledge at the beginning of the meeting. I felt like I should have had a tuxedo shirt on for... I want to talk to you a little bit about some educators that you may never have heard of. First guy is a guy named Paulo Freire. He was a remarkable man, a Brazilian educator, and he had this crazy weird idea in working with Brazilian agricultural peasants, that they were aware of their own problems and knew what the solutions were. What they didn't know was how to get their voice, speaking of voices, how to get their voices heard. And Paulo granted them the power of using what they knew in their own lives and helped them frame that power into an agricultural movement that improved their lives. And, by the way, the economy of the whole country of Brazil. Another guy is a, one I met in my reading not so long ago. His name was Amartya Sen. He was an Indian author and educator, and he formed a school in the first third of the 20th century. That's like 100 years ago. He taught that educational philosophy. He eschewed textbook learning in favor of anti-sectarian internist spirit of free reasoned inquiry and practical social progress. He was particularly interested, 100 years ago in India, in the uplift of women and the rural poor, for whom he founded a separate school on his own estate. And here's what his bottom line was. "The main object of teaching," he urged, "is not to explain meanings, but to knock at the door of the mind." See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Krogen.
The board received emails from Pablo Navadurán, Timothy Wick, and Brianna Forzowski.
Wonderful. All right, so that closes item 5.01. And now I'm happy to announce that our next meeting is on June 13th. And now, at 5:15 PM, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you for a great day, everyone. Thank you.